Get the clock on. Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It is the appointed hour. Welcome to the Lakewood City Council meeting for Tuesday, January 21, 2020. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Bokey.
Present.
Councilmember Branstadter.
Here.
Councilmember Farmer.
Here.
Councilmember Moss.
Here.
Councilmember Simpson has been excused. Deputy Mayor Whalen.
Present.
And Mayor Anderson has been excused. You have a quorum?
Well, thank you very much. Please join me in our pledge of allegiance, followed by a moment of silence, actually preceded by a moment of silence for our men and women serving overseas as well as here at home.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, thank you very much for coming. We have a delightfully full house tonight, so we have several items on the agenda. It's always a pleasure to start with proclamations and presentations to celebrate all sorts of good things going on in our community. The first tonight is a business showcase with DRK Development, and for that I would ask that Mr. Spencer Kelly, Vice President of Operations and the General Manager for DRK, join me at the podium if he's here. Aha, there he is. All right, very good. Becky, where's Becky? Or you're gonna take photos from down there? Okay, very good. Well, one of the things we enjoy doing here in the city of Lakewood is celebrating business because we're all about business here in Lakewood, and tonight we are pleased to honor DRK Development. It runs a lean operation, we're told. It's a business model the general contractor has followed for nearly three decades, and one that gives it a leg up on its competition. DRK's portfolio includes a wide range of projects from multifamily developments to assisted living and retirement facilities and light commercial construction. Project locations span from Edmonds, south, to Lincoln City, Oregon, though most are concentrated in the Puget Sound region. DRK was founded in 1993 by David Reed Kelly, and the company prides itself on its attention to detail in the pre-development stages of projects. Since 1994, the company has built 2,237 units, valued at over $263 million. Now, I would like to tell you that those are all here in the city of Lakewood, but I think they're spread out throughout the region. However, in 2019, DRK moved from its location in the Lakewood Industrial Park to a new building at 4901 112th Street Southwest, across the street from St. Clair Hospital, so we get to keep them here in Lakewood. Because of its commitment to building quality projects throughout the Puget Sound region, including the great city of Lakewood, the Lakewood City Council recognizes DRK Development as its January 2020 Business Showcase. So I appreciate you coming. I'm gonna hand this to you and shake your hand. We'll let Becky take a couple of photographs, and then you get a chance to say a few words, and then we'll have a photograph with council.
Okay, great.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you very much. It's very kind of the council and the city to showcase us. We just recently built our new office here in Lakewood and surprised how easy it was to get through the development process and permitting, so I appreciate that also. And really, we constantly looking for stuff to do around here, and we look forward to developing new stuff in the Lake, city of Lakewood. So, thank you.
Congratulations. All right. Next, we are proud to present a proclamation recognizing Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. in the month of February as Black History Month here in the city of Lakewood. And for this, would Councilmember Mary Moss join Grant Twymann, Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion Specialist with the Clover Park School District, along with members of the committee? If you'd like to join Mary and Grant at the podium, we'd love to have you celebrate this great event.
Whereas Monday, January 20 of 2020, is designated as a federal holiday celebrating the birth of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., who dedicated his life to the fundamental principles of freedom, opportunity, and equal justice to all. End.
Whereas such recognition is directed, is a direct result of his many contributions to society through his deeds and words. End.
Whereas through his march on Washington and his "I Have a Dream" speech, Dr. King reached a worldwide audience and was recognized by people from all walks of life as the conscious of an entire nation. End.
Whereas the month of February is designated as Black History Month to highlight struggles of race and citizenship in America's history, for experiences of free blacks in a land of slavery, to the political aspiration of African Americans today. End.
Whereas all Americans are reminded that our nation recognizes that all people are created equal and should be judged not by the color of their skin, but by the content of their character. End.
Whereas the city of Lakewood is committed to the ideals of a free society and is a community of great cultural diversity, which is with which it values and create, which it values and celebrate, and is dedicated to the brotherhood of all people. And whereas...
The city of Lakewood will again honor and honor the distinguished legacy of Dr. King at its 17th annual Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Celebration on Saturday, February 1, 2020, at Harrison Preparatory School, and supports its community partners who are honoring Black History Month with events in Lakewood on Saturday, February 8, at the Telacom Library at 12:00 p.m., Saturday, February 15, at the Lakewood Library at 2:00 p.m., and Saturday, February 22, from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at the Lakewood Boys and Girls Club.
Now, therefore, the Lakewood City Council hereby recognize Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. and proclaim the month of February 2020 as Black History Month in the city of Lakewood, and invite all citizens to join us in these observations proclaimed this 21st day of January 2020.
Congratulations. Thank you. And Grant, you might want to say a few words. We'll clap first, and then we'll have you say a few words.
Thank you, council. And I think it's, it's really important that we not only remember the man and the work of Dr. King, but we honor the legacy by continuing to build a better city, better community, better Lakewood. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Moss, did you have any, you're working so diligently on behalf of the multicultural coalition. Do you have any follow-on thoughts about the great event on February 1?
February 1 will be exciting. We look forward to seeing you all there. I don't give away secrets, so you have to be there to see what's gonna happen.
Thank you very much. And let's join us down at the podium. We'll take a big photograph and look forward to celebrating the month. Well, thank you very much. Next, we have a proclamation declaring January as School Board Recognition Month, and we're pleased to present this to the Clover Park School District Board of Directors through Alyssa Anderson Pearson. Joining Councilmember Bokey.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Whalen. The proclamation reads, "Whereas school boards create a vision for what students should know and be able to do to be successful. And whereas school boards ensure that educational programs and student assessments are tied to established standards. And whereas school boards are accountable to the community for operating schools that support student growth and achievement. And whereas school boards align school district resources to ensure students possess the knowledge and skills to be responsible citizens of a democratic society. And whereas school boards create a climate that supports the philosophy that all children can learn at high levels. And whereas school boards build collaborative relationships based on trust, teamwork, and shared accountability. And whereas school boards are committed to continuous education and training on issues related to student achievement. Now, therefore, the city of the Lakewood City Council proclaims the month of January as School Board Recognition Month and urges all citizens to join us in thanking the members of the Clover Park School District Board of Directors for their dedicated service in preparing today's students for tomorrow's world. Proclaim this 21st day of January 2020."
A little photograph there?
I guess we would just like to thank the city of Lakewood for being great partners with us. We can't have a great community without great schools and a great city council. And so, we really thank you, and we look forward to the joint meeting here coming up shortly.
Very good. Are you gonna bring Lakewood's almost newest pre-K, soon-to-be-in-four-years-student?
No, he's a toddler now, so no one wants that.
He's pretty cute. Thank you very much. We appreciate that. All the fine work you're doing. Next, we are pleased to have Mr. Bob Warfield here tonight, along with Sally Saunders and other members of the community and the Lakewood Community Foundation Fund to present the Larry Saunders Service Award Presentation. So, Bob, thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Deputy Mayor Whalen, Distinguished City Council, Manager Caulfield, city staff, city staff. Lakewood citizens, fellow directors, I'm Bob Warfield. Privileged to serve the Lakewood Community Foundation Fund and honored again by your presence tonight on behalf of the foundation to offer the Larry Saunders Service Award for 2019. Proceeding, I want to acknowledge people who serve with the Lakewood Community Foundation Fund. If you're here, please stand for a little recognition. Nicole Hancock is our president, Greg Radisky, our very able Secretary Treasurer, Ann Inquest, Bob Lawrence, Sidna Kuntz, Joyce Love Day, Jerry Dunlap, and Peggy Kennel. Thank you all for their dedication. And thank you, City Manager John Caulfield, for managing Washington's most becoming city. And Chief Mike Zorro, who is typically here, I guess, for keeping Lakewood safe. Mary Dodsworth for keeping us moving, and Ben Skler, wherever you are, for publishing the Suburban Times to keep us informed. Thanks also to Bren Gremley, tireless communicator, and Brianna Schumacher, who rewrites the book on multitasking every week. And not least, Melody Retire and Vicky, attentive people, the gracious ladies who keep the Lakewood reception area forever spring, even if you have to march upstairs to face Dave Buhr with the municipal code in hand. Like to pause for just a moment to reimagine community. Here we have a picture taken on place we live, taken on 7 December 1972 by a bunch of guys getting out of town on Apollo 17. This is the famous Carl Sagan Blue Marble from a mere 18,000 miles. Strange how detached it seems, but with a year of dedication, good legs, and a credit card, you can ride your bike 18,000 miles in a year. And here's another picture of the same place, taken 19 July 2013. And if you squint, you can see us way out there, 900 million miles away. It took Cassini well over six and a half years to reach Saturn for this photo, and it offers another even more humbling perspective of community. And I respectfully submit the ultimate selfie. This is home where we live, where our great or great-great-grandparents immigrated, struggled, overcame, made lives bearing the responsibilities of community. And here we may dream but never know future generations of aspiration and common inheritance to all that we shall one day leave beyond time and endeavor. To our keeping are left memory and duty, service, and community. Larry Saunders exemplified all of these, establishing landmarks to sentinel reference and regard. Larry was a great guy, uplifting spirits. He taught us all that we can be more than the sum of our regrets, and we can have the courage to innovate and go forward toward the unknown. Annually, City of Lakewood and Lakewood Community Foundation Fund partner to remember Chief Larry and to honor his service and memory by selection of a person or organization deemed worthy of special recognition. With thanks to everyone submitting a nomination and to Marie Barth, Stephanie Walsh from the Chamber of Commerce, and Peggy Kennel from the Community Foundation Fund, the award recognition committee for their selection of the 2019 Larry Saunders Service Award will be presented tonight to Alan Billingsley for his many years of dedicated leadership and service above self with the Lakewood, Lakewood's Rotary Club of Clover Park. Again, grateful, gratefully we have with us tonight Sally to present the award to Mr. Billingsley, and I hope Ms. Ellen Carr, President of Clover Park Rotary, prepared to receive it, and our esteemed Mayor, beg your pardon, Deputy Mayor Jason Whalen to officiate. With appreciation for everyone here tonight, for many unable to join us, one closing request. Every year, we go to the well seeking ideas, money, and leadership to contend with opportunity for Lakewood. Every year, we find ourselves restored by the generation, generosity of neighbors, our service organizations, and schools. Our two Rotary Clubs, Kiwanis Lions, Caring for Kids, Food Pantries, Church Groups, all step up to help out, reach out. Invest and commit to the civic prospect of our community. All of us invest in the possibilities of our children's future, but as Larry Saunders advocated for so long and so well, I respectfully ask that each of us find some personally satisfying way to invest in Lakewood, in the city we love, recognizing that those who follow must carry on as we. And to that end, I respectfully commend gifting as you are able, some portion of your estate to help grow the permanent endowment, I want to emphasize permanent endowment, of the Lakewood Community Foundation Fund. Sally, thank you for being with us tonight, and thank you all for your intention, attention. And Mr. Billingsley, congratulations to you, and from a grateful community. And if you and Ms. Carr and Sally and Deputy Mayor Whalen can come forward, we'll take care of the hardware.
I first met Larry Saunders the first year we were a city of Lakewood, as a city of Lakewood, in Telacom at a foster parenting class. I was asked to come help with, my wife and I. And here was our police chief, serving dinner to everybody at that foster parenting meeting. From then on, I began to see him every place in Lakewood, and it is an honor to be recognized with any kind of service, even close to what Larry did for our community. Our community is filled with people who serve it daily. Many of them are in this room, and I'm appreciative of all of you that make Lakewood a better place to live. Thanks.
Well-deserved and well-done, good and faithful servant. Thank you, Alan, for all your good work here in the city of Lakewood. Thank you, Bob, and members of the Lakewood Community Foundation Fund for the welcome and warm reminder that service matters and service counts, and Larry Saunders indeed epitomized a serving spirit. We next turn to the public comment section of tonight's meeting. Members of the audience may comment on items related to any matter related to city business under the public comment period. Comments are limited to three minutes per person. Groups who have at least three members present at the meeting may designate a speaker, who may have a total of 10 minutes to speak on behalf of the group. And although we have a sign-in sheet at the back, you're welcome to sign in. You're not required to sign in. You can queue up at the podium if you'd like to speak during the public comment section. First, we have Mr. Houghan, followed by Glenn Spieth, and then I believe Carrie Hills, your third on the signup list, but again, no requirement to sign up, per se. Feel free to queue up at the microphone.
Dennis Houghan, Lakewood, Washington.
Now, the state wants to get involved, and my bet is almost anything they will suggest is it'll make it worse. What I suggest is that everybody read the Constitution, get back to the Constitution, and look at the rule of law, and pay more respect for law enforcement officers, and which probably won't happen, but I suggest going into YouTube and watching the movie Seattle is Dying, and listen to what the police are saying, and come back to the rule of law and applying it, and things will probably get much better. And the sanctuary, you know, the sanctuary state law is a fool's errand. Why shouldn't various police agencies talk to each other? And get the criminals off the street when they hurt people, they kill people, rape people. We're getting some people that run for office in this state that nowhere near the caliber that we should have. And I think it's because maybe the people that got the leadership skills are leaving, and they don't want to put up with all of the slander and gossip the news media puts out. And, you know, Denny Heck never went to, never went to the border. He just went to CNN.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Mr. Glenn Spieth.
Glenn Spieth, City of Lakewood. I wanted to talk tonight about the proposed 7/11 to replace DeLong's drive-in. In reviewing the City of Lakewood Ordinance 726 Exhibit B, adopted 16 December 2019, effective 30 days after final passage, so that's pretty close to now, if not already One of the parts of that ordinance says vehicle entrances and exits shall not be located so as to cause congestion to any street or right-of-way. Talks about the queuing lane. Drive-through uses shall not be approved with ingress or egress driveways within 300 feet of signalized intersections. You know, in my opinion, the worst intersection, or one of the worst in Lakewood, of course, is Bridgeport and St. Ellicum. And you have to go past my property to get to 300 feet from the signals. I already have problems getting in and out of that signal area, and I can't imagine the drive-through ingress and egress that are all within 300 feet of that signal that are going to get through there. Second thing, I don't like gas fuel tanks, underground tanks, being located uphill from my property with vent pipes right next to the fence, next to my carport and, and home. So I would hope that some of this stuff gets looked at, and as time goes along and I get to review the rest of this ordinance, maybe there's a number of other things that will be not proper for that particular piece of property. I didn't have a problem with DeLong's. I ate there periodically because it was easy. I wouldn't have any problem with a small restaurant or something like that, because that's convenient, but you've already got a convenience store on the opposite corner, and there's been shootings there. 7/11s attract robberies, shooting, drug exchanges, and so forth. And I, I don't want to have to be carrying a gun around on my property just to protect my property and myself. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, there was, yep, Carrie Hills. A Jonas Up and Un signed up, but indicated they don't really want to speak, but if you're here and you'd like to speak, you're welcome to. So Carrie, go ahead.
Thank you. Carrie Hills, Lakewood, Washington, Deputy Mayor, council members. I just want to say thank you. I know lots of times you guys hear comments, and I imagine sometimes it may be challenging. I know you guys aren't required to have a public comment section. I just want to say thank you for the last couple of times that I came and spoke, having to listen to me, and I just want to say thank you. So, thank you, and have a good night.
Appreciate that. Thank you very much. Are there any more that wish to express thanks that would like to sign up at the public comment section of tonight's meeting? Please queue up. If there are no other members of the public who wish to speak to council during the public comment period, I will declare the public comment period closed. We now turn to the consent agenda. Madam Clerk.
A, approval of the minutes of the City Council meeting of January 6, 2020. B, motion number 2020-02 approving the 2020 Citizens Advisory Board's committees and commission work plans. C, motion number 2020-03 authorizing the execution of a professional services agreement with Perry Howard in the amount of $100,000 for the Colonial Plaza Public Art Project. D, motion number 2020-04 approving the replacement of existing wide-format printers and scanner. E, motion number 2020-05 reappointing Don Anderson to serve on the Pierce Transit Board of Commissioners from January 1, 2020 through December 31, 2022. F, Ordinance Number 727 vacating the eastern 70 feet of Walnut Street southwest right-of-way east of the intersection with Langlow Street southwest. G, items filed in the Office of the City Clerk. 1, Lakewood's Promise Advisory Board meeting minutes of June 6, 2019. 2, Lakewood's Promise Advisory Board meeting minutes of October 3, 2019. 3, Lakewood's Promise Advisory Board meeting minutes of November 7, 2019.
Thank you very much. And for the edification of anyone out there listening, these items on the consent agenda have been reviewed by council in previous study sessions, so we're familiar with the items. That said, is there any item on the consent agenda which any council member wishes to remove at this time for further consideration?
I'm with approval of the consent agenda.
It's been moved by Councilmember Bokey and seconded by Councilmember Moss that we adopt the consent agenda as presented. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent agenda has been adopted. We now move to the regular agenda under ordinances. Madam Clerk.
Ordinance Number 728, amending Chapter 8.76 of the Lakewood Municipal Code relating to structures and parks, rights of way, and city property.
Thank you very much. And for this and further explanation, we have the City Attorney, Ms. Walter.
Good evening, Pro-Tem Mayor Whalen, and members of the council, Heidi Ann Walter, City Attorney for the City of Lakewood. And this ordinance was not so fortunate as to go on a consent agenda, because when there's lots of discussion at the study session and you're expecting some changes, this is the part where we find out how well I was tracking. So, in your packet, you have both an agenda bill and a proposed ordinance, and I'm going to just review really quickly what's different this week than what we had last week. What's different is that the council's concerns are that the structures that interfere with the citizens' enjoyment of different areas of the city isn't really restricted to just parks, and the council made that clear, that their goal is to keep areas that we've invested resources in, such as the gateways to the city, front areas of city facilities, and the parks, clear for everyone to enjoy and enhance the aesthetic when we do things like economic development programs, where we bring people through the city. So what you'll see in the ordinance is that we now have parks, public rights of way, and city property. Now, that goes a little bit further than the Tacoma ordinance that we were trying to base this on, but that was part of the discussion, and what I heard the council saying is that you want to maintain all of those public areas. Beyond that, we took out the word "no" in the title. It originally said, "No structures in parks are on city property," but as you can see in the ordinance, there are certain circumstances, very limited, under which they might be allowed, and those are circumstances under which we can actually assure the safety of the structure because we're involved in it being there. We did discuss the fact that putting in rights of way is a little bit repetitive, because we have a section in our Public Works Code under Title 12 that does not allow placement of any objects in the right-of-way, but the council was comfortable repeating it because you want to make sure that people are aware of what we're saying, so you have it in two different places that are significantly different, one's about the parks and the other one's having to do with public works, and this way, people are clear on what the intent is. I would be happy to try and answer any questions the council has, or find out how close I came to what we discussed last week.
I'll open it up to questions, but I'm going to toss one at you to start. Under page 70 of the packet, under Section C1 and 2 of the proposed ordinance...
Correct.
So, the section doesn't apply to any structure erected, installed, or placed within a park, right-of-way, or city property by the owner or operator of the park. Who might that be if not the city?
It is the city. I could certainly clean that language up if you wish, but the operator could be somebody that's had delegated authority, although typically what we would say is, for example, the Parks Director or designee, we could put it that way.
That might be a little more clear to me, anyway. I don't know about the rest of you. Maybe that was the only ambiguity. And then, under C2, a temporary structure that has only a roof and no walls. I was trying to think through that.
Pop-up tents.
What comes to mind are the, the market vendors that serve the farmer's market on the public right-of-way.
Exactly. And part of the reason those are accepted, there's two reasons, really. The reason for prohibiting tents and structures that you can't see into is part of the concern is that it's hard to tell what the conduct is that's going on in there. There's a certain kind of privacy that's created, which isn't necessarily to be expected in a park or an open public area, and so by having any kind of walls or opaque sides to something, our law enforcement has a little trouble making sure that things are under control, there's sanitary concerns and so forth. Pop-up tents, by contrast, are very transparent. They shield people from sun and rain, which is important here, sometimes within five minutes of each other, but that helps people to get the protection they need from those things if they're out here for a baseball game or what have you, but it doesn't provide that shield from people knowing what's going on. Everybody's there for the same reason. You can see whatever's going on there.
So not to parse words, as a lawyer, but no walls, it would be a rare day when I see a market vendor having a tent with no back wall to display their wares or to otherwise advertise their business.
That should fall under Part 1. That should be something, if you're a food vendor, you should not be in the park unless you're permitted.
Got it.
The pop-up tent is classically in a park because folks are out there for the motocross event, or an hours-long baseball game, or what have you. I see them at swim meets, because I don't have children in soccer, I have children who do swimming, so people will bring those along to sporting events. You see them at the cross-country meets, that kind of thing.
Okay. Those are the only pithy questions I had, but thank you for your responses. Mr. Branstadter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Walter, my question has to do with the same sections the deputy mayor asked about, specifically C1. In the last part of that, it says, "or as expressly authorized by special use permitted by the city." And the structure seems odd. Is, did, were we trying to say a special use permit? Or, in other words, authorized by a special use permit issued by the city? If the intent, we have a variety of types of permits. Special use permit is one type of permit, but there are other types of permits, right-of-way permits, things like that, that might apply. And, and so, would it hurt the ordinance, it says, if, if we deleted "by special use permitted" and, and that read "as expressly authorized by the city," which will allow us to authorize it in a myriad of ways that might occur? I'm having trouble with the grammar as it's written.
Well, Councilmember Branstadter, there is a bit of a distinction, and it, it would be up to the council to decide which way they'd rather have it read. If it's a, if it's a "use permitted by the city" that inherently allows that type of structure, Summerfest, for example, then the city is permitting the event, and within that event, certain structures are permitted, and they would be vendors and so forth inherent to the event. On the other hand, if you're saying you need a special permit in order to put up your structure, it puts the city in a position of making a determination as to each person setting up such a structure, and it is potentially higher risk to be passing judgment on each applicant than it would be to be saying certain events inherently have certain types of structure involved.
So, I guess where I'm at is expressly authorized by, and then, it doesn't say special use permit, it says special use permitted. And then, by the city, is, is, is a, so is it authorized as a special use by the city? I'm...
Councilmember Branstadter, and obviously, when there's a question like that, it means it's not as clear as what was intended when it was written, but the intent was to say special use is permitted. Within that special use, there will be vendor tents, or there may be old cars that we normally don't allow on the grass, or there may be a dunk tank, or a special stage, or a triathlon course, or a running course, that are part of the special use, so that we aren't getting into a question of your shelter's allowed, your shelter's not allowed. We're saying, Summerfest, if you are a vendor, vendors have to have contracts to do Summerfest, vendors will have a food truck, vendors may have a tent with two walls, vendors may haul in a fairly sizable barbecue that we normally wouldn't allow people to just haul into the park. But that was the intent, and obviously, if it's not clear, that can be an issue, because I know the council has always focused on wanting people to be able to read the code and know what's allowed and not allowed.
That's usually a preferable construction.
Thank you. I, I guess I'm, I'm not comfortable with the way that it's worded, but I, it would take me a few minutes to sit down and try to figure out what would be clearer. If another council member has some suggested wording, I'd be open to that, or if the rest of the council is...
Or there may be old cars that we normally don't allow on the grass. Or there may be a dunk tank, or a special stage, or a triathlon course, or a running course, that are part of the special use. So that we aren't getting into a question of, "Your shelter's allowed, your shelter's not allowed." We're saying, "Summerfest, if you are a vendor," vendors have to have contracts to do Summerfest, vendors will have a food truck, vendors may have a tent with two walls, vendors may haul in a fairly sizable barbecue that we normally wouldn't allow people to just haul into the park. But that was the intent. And obviously, if it's not clear, that can be an issue. Because I know the council has always focused on wanting people to be able to read the code and know what's allowed and not allowed.
That's usually a preferable construction.
I guess I'm, I'm not comfortable with the way that it's worded, but it would take me a few minutes to sit down and try to figure out what would be clearer. If another council member has some suggested wording, I'd be open to that. Or if the rest of the council is not as confused as I, I'm fine with that, too.
Well, I think, actually, one of the recommendations of the pro tem mayor might help a little bit with the clarity, because what you had suggested was, in that C1, when you're talking about any structure within a park, right-of-way, or city property, "by the city," or "as expressly authorized by special use permitted by the city." So in other words, it's, regardless of what you're going to put up there, the city in some form either has to be a part of it, specifically doing it, or authorizing it. So that's really what we're trying to get at.
It would be clearer to me if the wording was "special use permit" instead of "special use permitted." Was it, is it intended to be a permit? Or, it's sort of, got too many verbs in there with "permitted."
Mr. Bokey. At the risk of playing lawyer, I'm getting hung up on "authorized by special use permitted by the city." I look at the "by," and should "by" be "for"? So is it "for" a special use permitted? Or does that get too specific? Is there a difference legally between "for" and "by"? And am I missing the point?
I think that one could go either way. As I indicated, the intent is to say that the special use is permitted.
Right.
And because there's a special use, so for example, on a given occasion, the park really isn't the park. The park is a venue for something. And that venue has been allowed. That venue necessarily includes certain structures that if it was just a park, would not necessarily be appropriate.
So who was it that said "by a special use"? Would that litter? I mean, that, in my mind, seems to clear it up, but... As long as it's not limiting, from your perspective, as our city attorney.
I don't think that that would unnecessarily limit it.
With that edit, are we more comfortable? Mr. Branstadter? You want to read that, Ms. Walker?
I will read, as I've understood, two of the constructions offered. This is under C1. "Any structure erected, installed, or placed within a park, right-of-way, or city property by the city, or as expressly authorized by a special use permit."
Issued by the city.
Issued by the city.
It's either authorized by the city or pursuant to a permit issued by the city. Or, I should say, it's either...
Placed by the city.
Placed by the city.
Or permitted by the city.
Yeah. I think that should work.
Maybe. C1. "Any structure erected, installed, or placed within a park, right-of-way, or city property by the city, or as expressly authorized by a special use permit issued by the city."
Okay. That language is understandable to me, and I would like to do that. And when we get to the point of where we actually have a motion on the floor, then I would move to make that amendment to the ordinance, once the ordinance has been moved.
I think we can do that. If there are no further questions, or the city attorney? Councilmember Farmer.
There we go. At the risk of sounding very new, what does this do for the windbreaks that folks put up? They have sides on them out at American Lake or in parks when it gets windy?
Well, right now, if that is not a structure that has only a roof and no walls, then the windbreaks could be problematic under the way that this is currently written.
I was wondering about that.
Where you sit down, you're sitting and watching a concert or something?
Yeah, and it's, yeah, it's kind of a U-shaped, you're enclosed. You can see out and in, usually on one side.
Any other concerns, comments, questions before we call for a motion? Do I have a motion to adopt ordinance number 728?
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Moss and seconded by Councilmember Branstadter that we adopt ordinance number 728. Any further discussion or amendments? Mr. Branstadter.
Deputy Mayor, I would move to amend Section 1, C1, with the language as proposed by the city attorney.
It has been moved by Councilmember Branstadter that we amend the ordinance at Section C, Sub 1, to read as previously enunciated by the city attorney, who I hope has taken it down.
Okay.
Want to read it again for the record?
Yeah.
Before we get a second.
Oh, okay.
Let's have her read it again real quick before we get a second on the motion to amend.
The proposed amendment is to change Section C1 from the language before the council in the packet to the following. "One, any structure erected, installed, or placed within a park, right-of-way, or city property by the city, or as expressly authorized by a special use permit issued by the city."
Do we have a second to the proposed amendment? It's been seconded by Councilmember Bokey. Is there any further discussion on the amendment? There's no further discussion. All those in favor of the amendment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The amendment has passed. We now turn to ordinance number 728 as amended. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of ordinance 728 as amended signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ordinance 728 as amended has been adopted. Now turn to unfinished business. Madam Clerk or Mr. City Manager?
No unfinished business, Deputy Mayor.
Very good. New business?
No new business either, Deputy Mayor.
Turning to reports by the city manager, Mr. Coffield.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, and good evening, council. First up, I'd like to invite up our Judge Susan Adams to give the council an update on municipal court department activities.
Good evening, Deputy Mayor, to the council. Oh, did I already hit something? Did I screw something up? I walk up here and everything disappears. Sorry. Might have to do a computer reset in order to get it to scale properly.
We've got it on our computers.
Do you have it there? As I've got it in front of me, too.
Yeah, yeah, we're fine.
I just want to do that.
Yeah, we're fine.
There's not, I know that...
I know Mr. Bucic was really hoping for a large...
Bucic might be really sad.
Mr. Bucic wanted a 10-foot by 8-foot.
I think he did.
Yeah, exactly.
So I don't need that either. All right. Yes, I was always taught, you know, when you're doing presentations, be prepared for the PowerPoint not to work.
Exactly.
So I've got my trusty printout here.
We're with you.
So, good evening, again. I'm here to share a little bit with you about the municipal court and give you an update on the workings of the court this past year. Just to give you an overview, I know this is repetitive for some of you, but I know we have new councilmember Farmer, I haven't had a chance to meet yet, so thought we would just do a little overview of what we do here in municipal court. We are a court that serves four jurisdictions: Lakewood, University Place, Stillcom, and DuPont. And we have both criminal and civil cases that we handle. We handle misdemeanors, which are minimum, or mandatory minimum, maximum penalties of 90 days in jail and $1,000 fine, typically one year or sometimes two years of jurisdiction. And we have gross misdemeanors, maximum sentence of 364 days in jail and a $5,000 fine for domestic violence gross misdemeanors, as well as DUI gross misdemeanors. The jurisdiction can run for 60 months on those cases. All other jurisdiction is 24 months. So on the civil side, then we have infractions, code violations, including animal code violations, land use violations, parking, and photo infractions. And you've got your slides, the list of different types of crimes that we see here in Lakewood. I would tell you, my quick math that I was doing today, about 22% of all of our criminal cases filed last year were domestic violence-related. About 5% were DUI-related. And then you have just a wide variety of other types of crimes. And again, looking at the fact that in those DV and DUI cases, we do take 60 months of jurisdiction in those matters. Then again, you have the quality-of-life crimes, the criminal trespass, theft in the third degree. Our police department does an outstanding job of working with our local merchants to really aggressively investigate and work on issues of theft in the third degree, which is common everywhere. But in fact, we handle all misdemeanors and gross misdemeanors if they were committed in the city of Lakewood, University Place, Stillcom, or DuPont. And likewise, I've got a list of all the infractions. We all probably drive vehicles and kind of know what the standard moving infractions are with speeding. The new one that is getting a lot of people frustrated is the use of personal devices while driving. And people are learning that just this, just touching it, is a violation. And they're going to be held accountable, and that is something that will really be rough on your insurance. Then we also have a code compliance calendar where we handle land use and property maintenance violations, improper storage, animal control violations. We handle that. That's a smaller group of infractions, and we handle that calendar once a month. The time and the resources of the judge are split essentially between the courtroom and outside the courtroom. The bulk of the time that I spend is in the courtroom, and it's mainly on criminal cases. Criminal cases, yes, councilmember?
Could it be possible to catch lives on our screen after the judge's brief session?
Oh, all right. I thought we were, I apologize, I thought we were going, make it...
I have control.
You do?
Yeah.
Oh, all right. So I'm on judicial time and resources. I'm discombobulated. All right. So in the courtroom, most time is spent on criminal cases. Infractions typically take one hearing. Somebody gets an infraction. Most people that get infractions actually just pay and don't even ask for a hearing. But those that do, we hold those hearings. It's a one-time thing. It's extremely rare. Sometimes people will fail to appear. They have an opportunity then to come back for a show-cause hearing and get one more crack at the apple. But in any event, it mainly is a one-time event. Criminal cases are completely different. They require multiple hearings, you know, from arraignment all the way through trial, potentially, or disposition, and then violation and review hearings. In the midst of all that, oftentimes, we have people that don't come to court. They fail to appear. And so they might have gone through arraignment and the pre-trial, and then they didn't come back. And so two years later, they're picked up on a warrant, or they're quashing a warrant, and we start again. So it's a, it's a rather lengthy process, depending on the particular case. Outside the courtroom, I have administrative duties that I am responsible for, working with the court administrator, and obviously, making sure that the court is meeting its legal mandates and obligations that are required by the state. Spend some time every week preparing for upcoming hearings. We have a large review hearing calendar every week, and having that prepared and ready so that we know who's doing what they're supposed to do and who isn't before a court starts is important. And being ready on pre-trial motions, reading the briefs, and being ready to rule on those. Staying current with case law is a really large part of what I do. We get many, many emails per week from the state with updated case law, and I spend a good deal of time reading that and keeping current. And I also have the opportunity to participate in the District Municipal Court Judicial Association Committees. I'm on the Therapeutic Courts Committee, which is a statewide committee. And we'll talk a little bit more about our therapeutics court in a moment. But I've been on that committee now, because I'm in my third year of being on that committee. I'm also on the Conference Planning Committee for the Spring Conference. So case filings, let me, 2019 case filings. All right. So for 2019, total of all filings, criminal, infraction, parking, and for all four jurisdictions, When you're talking about criminal, it's a little, it's about 3,050. So that's the lower number, but it's the higher volume of work that we generate from that. If you go to the next slide, it's got an overview of a comparison, infractions, criminal filings, and photo parking from '17, '18, and '19. You can see that we're down a little bit in infractions, although it's bumped up quite a bit from last year. And the police department has been doing more speed emphasis, and we're seeing the results of that in our court and the impact of that. Yes, Deputy Mayor?
I just had a quick question. What's the percentage of these that are typically like the infractions that are contested that really soak up court time? Because we issue, it looks like we file a lot of these things. How many of them actually come to you with people saying, "You know, he didn't have his radar calibrated," or?
Well, if you, two slides forward, you're going to see municipal court hearings and for infractions.
Okay.
Let's just say, so we had 72, 53 filed infractions in 2019. There were 2,687 hearings.
That's quite a few.
So it's quite a few. People, people have a hard time believing that they've been caught speeding.
Right.
And they want to come in and say their piece. And photo parking infractions, far less. If you look at that, we had 17,029 photo infractions issued last year and only 321 hearings. So, and I think that has to do with the fact that photo infractions do not go on your driving record. They're not abstracted to the Department of Licensing, so it's less of an impact on your driving record. We go to hearings. Hearings is a large number, 17,354, and the bulk of that is criminal. Again, it gets back to that idea that while we may only have 3,000 cases filed in 2019, it's compounded by all the files from previous years and the jurisdiction that we're taking, and factors and failures to appear. And just the longer you're in court, the more cases that you have, and the more hearings that you have. So you can see, if you go to the next slide, there's an uptick in, a slight uptick in hearings over the last three years. Infractions went up a little bit again this year as well, but photo was down. Hearings were down, photo filings were up. All right. Next slide. So some of the achievements that I'm very proud of, that we've accomplished in the past year. First and foremost, the federal grant that we received, a $450,000 federal grant to enhance our Veterans Court. We have finished up the first year of that grant. We have three years still to go as we work to grow and enhance that program. We had success, we've successfully converted our collection accounts to Dynamic. Dynamic is a collection agency that's here in the state of Washington. They had a higher, have a higher success rate in collections. They also have been more responsive in working with us in the court, as well as working with our population of people that are trying to make payments that might be struggling. with our population and people that are trying to make payments that might be struggling. They're more apt to work with folks trying to get their fines paid. We're working always to streamline court practices for increased efficiencies. We are very much believers in cross-training. We meet weekly, looking at different processes and ways of doing things that can streamline, save staff time, and create more efficiencies for the court. I've already noted that working at the state level on the Therapeutic Courts Committee, and this year I was invited to join the Honorable Robert J. Bryan Chapter of the American Inns of Court, so that's another, something, an honor that I was pleased to be invited to do that. Yes?
Thank you. Could you perhaps tell us a little bit about the American Inns of Court? I got to tell you that the first time I read inns of court, my mind translated that as jails. The word "inns" seems an odd.
This is a nationwide body, and there are different chapters all around the country, and it's a group of lawyers, law students, judges, that come together with the idea of maintaining civility and the honorable practice of law. It is a, it's a monthly meeting where we have a continuing legal education component and then a dinner, but it fosters a camaraderie and a civility, and that's really the bottom line, is that you're, it's about mentoring young attorneys who are coming up in this, what can be a very adversarial and difficult practice. And, you know, lawyers often don't have the best reputation, and these groups are working very tirelessly to dispel those notions and to create a sense of pride and understanding of collegiality and civility in the practice of law. So it's.
Is this chapter regional, quite local?
It is, it's local. It's, well, Tacoma Pierce County area. There are chapters in King County, several chapters up in King County. I'm still quite new to inns of court. I don't know if Deputy Mayor Whalen, have you been a member?
Been a member for, I don't know, better part of two decades. My problem is they meet on Mondays, which happens to be the same time we meet here. So they've put me on this slow track to nowhere called Emeritus, and so I'm an Emeritus member of the Robert J. Bryan Chapter. Robert J. Bryan, by the way, is a retired member of our federal court. He was one of the initial members that formed the chapter here locally of the American Inns of Court, which is, again, is a national organization. So I think they're doing a dedication, or they had one, for Judge Bryan recently.
It was, it was in December.
Honor his service for better part of 35 years, I think.
I think 50.
Fifty, wasn't it?
Over his whole career.
Yeah, crazy. So anyway, great group of people. It's an honor to have you as part of that organization.
I was very pleased to be asked.
I think it's a great thing, so that's what it is. Harkens back to the barrister thing, you know, in England, and that's where you get the inns of court.
Thank you.
You can wear a wig if you want, if you want to go to the meeting.
Yeah. I'm pretty new, but I haven't seen that yet.
Yeah.
All right. Next slide. Just going to briefly touch on our therapeutic court, Veterans Treatment Court. It started about a month before I took the bench, two or three months before I took the bench in late 2016, and it has continued to grow. The font is small there, but you can see the mission of the Veterans Court is to work collaboratively with community partners and resources to create safer communities, reduce recidivism by helping veterans reintegrate back into our community, more effectively by connecting them with the services they have earned. It's a completely different way of looking at the justice system, and it's particularly well-suited to our community and our veteran population. And for justice-involved veterans who have found themselves in a difficult situation, Veterans Court is an opportunity for them to come alongside and work with treatment providers and with their Veterans Court team to get the help they need in order to have their cases ultimately dismissed. If you want to go to the next slide, please. It's a small court right now, although nine is more than, we've got nine current participants, and we have nine graduates to date. We have more pending entry in the next few months. It is, again, as I said, it's a completely different type of court than your traditional court setting. It's very non-adversarial. The Vet Court Team comprises the prosecutor, public defender, judge, court administrator, probation officer, treatment provider. We all meet before court and staff every case, and we come to consensus about whether someone's doing what they're supposed to be doing, whether they're not. If they're not, we work together to try and find a solution that's going to be best suited for their issue, and we start at the easy end of write a letter to tell us why it is you missed your probation department appointment. Write a reflective essay as to why you think this is happening, and then it may scale up to where we're going to put you on electronic home monitoring for a period of time. Unfortunately, there are times when we have to put somebody in jail for a day or two to get their attention, but the whole goal is to create a supportive atmosphere through their mentor, through their relationship with me as the judge, and with the entire Vet Court Team, moving them forward in a really positive way. We've had very, very positive feedback from our veterans. They talk about the fact that they've never been in a court where somebody actually talks to them and treats them like a person. The way our court works, and I won't go too long, I would highly recommend if you haven't come to see Veterans Court, that you come and see the court. But the way it works, when the defendant sits down, or the veteran sits down, their attorney introduces them and gives a quick overview. Probation officer gives an overview. That's somewhat normal, but then the prosecutor gets to turn and talk to the veteran and connect with them and gets to know them. Ms. Walker has been doing this work for us for the last little bit, and it's been, I think, I would imagine, it's very unique as a prosecutor to be the one directly interacting with a defendant or a veteran participant. And then after that's done, I just get a chance to talk to them and have a conversation. We usually take six, seven, eight minutes about what's going on with them in the program, but then also some things that are going on with them outside of that, and creating a conversation and a support network where they know that not only I care about them, but that everybody in the courtroom cares about them and is invested in their success. So again, it's very rewarding. It's different than anything I've ever done in my almost 30 years of working in the justice system, but we're seeing it happen. Veterans Courts are coming up around the country, as well as other therapeutic court models, and I think it's really a valuable way of looking at things for populations who are ready to take steps to get the help they need. The last little bit there, the Vet Court Forum. This year, every other month, we hold a dinner after court. We serve meals to the veterans. We invite their families, their mentors, our treatment providers, all the court, Vet Court Team. And it's, again, it's a come-together. We move all the chairs in the courtroom and come together for a meal. And again, it's just a way of instilling in them that there is a community who really and truly supports them.
Judge, just a couple of questions here.
Yes.
So, first question, would it be appropriate for a couple of us to join you at a Vet Court Forum one of these days?
We would love that. Anytime. I can get you the schedule. I'll get Ms. Schumacher, I think.
Okay.
It is, all right.
Yeah, it might be fun for.
This year, we're doing evening only every other month, but even on the months that we don't, we're doing a reception shortly after court. So if that works better for your schedule, either way, we would welcome that. I think that's part of what makes this special for our veterans, is that they see so many people in the community who care, and it's a powerful message.
So, and to get a flavor for the work you've done with the graduates, the nine, and then the nine participants, if there is a common theme, what is a common theme or themes of the types of things or issues that they're presented with in their life that lands them in Lakewood Municipal Court for which they become eligible for Veterans Court? What's going on out there?
Well, typically, the crimes that we have in Veterans Court are alcohol-related or domestic violence-related, so it's DUIs and domestic violence. And it's typically, though, with our veterans, it's more than just a substance use issue. There are issues of PTSD and other co-occurring challenges that make them, you know, make it so that it isn't just about going to that six months or a year of treatment. It's about going out to the VA. There are so many amazing classes and treatment options out at the VA that we have, they have an opportunity to utilize. If they're not VA-eligible, we now have a partner through Pierce County Alliance where they can get treatment at Pierce County Alliance through our grant. We also now have transportation, and all of our veterans do go to get their random UAs at Pierce County Alliance, because that makes for a truly random UA, which is not, was not possible prior to getting that grant, and is, it is a best practice as far as monitoring and making sure people are really in compliance.
Thank you.
I'll go to the next slide. So looking ahead to 2020 and beyond, obviously, we've got three more years on this grant, so we're really focused on growing our numbers in a way that's healthy and manageable, but that also helps us, allows us to comply with our grant. I do have a goal, and I'm always looking at other therapeutic courts, and what are other communities doing with community courts and mental health courts? I've talked to city manager about this a number of times, and my philosophy and belief is that we need to make sure that Veterans Court is strong and really going on all cylinders before we decide to shoot off and try something, add something to it. So we're really focused on growing and sustaining Veterans Court. But I think the wave of the future in courts of limited jurisdiction, as well as superior courts, is looking at some forms of community court, particularly for cases where we're talking about repeat criminal trespass in the second degree, repeat theft cases where poverty and mental health are the underlying issues, and that there are ways that we can bring community partners together to help with treatment and change that trajectory for those folks. So I think it's down the line, but it's important to consider. And then also exploring options for a relicensing program. The state, again, this year, has legislation. I don't know if it's going to go anywhere, creating a statewide program where folks that have outstanding traffic infraction fines can set up one payment plan for everything they have in any jurisdiction and get their license, the failures to appear removed from their license so that they can get relicensed and get back to being productive. But we'll see, we'll see where that goes. Happy to answer any questions that you have.
Well, thank you very much, Ms. Moss. And then Mr. Branstadter?
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. Did you say you meet every other month or every month?
For Veterans Court?
Mm-hmm.
Well, we meet every month, and then if we have a violation or an issue, we will have a special hearing, but we do a forum, the evening forum, every other month, and on the off months, we do a reception. And I can absolutely make sure that I get that full schedule. I believe that it may be somewhere, but with the change with the forums, I'll make sure that there's an updated schedule that you all have.
Right. The LMCC Board and Committee was interested in that. We had a discussion last week about that, so they would like to come to that, so I'll make arrangements.
Let me know, just that we always have, it's good to have a head count if we're making food.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Branstadter?
Judge, thank you for the presentation and everything to do there. I just wondered if you could make some comments about recidivism that we're seeing coming through our courts, particularly with respect to domestic violence or DUI or any other areas of it. I know you mentioned in the slide that the Veterans Court has a recidivism focus, but what are we seeing in terms of that in those other key violations that are?
Well, I think unfortunately, we do see people that are perpetual, you know, users of our system, but one of the things that, you know, we really focus on, and we have, I think, strong prosecution and commitment to holding people accountable. And so when somebody is convicted of a crime, or when they are given a disposition that might be something along the lines of a continuation, as long as you complete all of these conditions, then your case may be dismissed or reduced, but it comes with a lot of conditions, and we monitor that and have to hold people accountable. The issue that I always find with domestic violence or alcohol is if a person doesn't want the treatment, they can check the box and do the treatment, or just ignore it altogether. If they're committed to making a change, then we can see them step away from the criminal justice system, but it's got to be something that's owned by the individual offender. There are certain principles of the therapeutic court model that I try to use in my regular court as far as encouraging people, and I'm obviously a huge person as far as my, I have a strong belief in treating everybody with respect, looking everybody in the eye, calling them by their name, and making sure that they feel heard. But again, if they're, it's up to them if they want to, you know, take on and make the changes that they need to make.
So I guess, you know, from your perspective on the bench, do you perceive that there are adequate, effective tools or places that we can submit to people to try to get help, particularly with respect to domestic violence? Or is that something the city should perhaps consider how to invest in?
I think that there are a number of, I know there are a number of treatment entities, agencies, you know, in our community, but I think in the balance of that is that they cost money. And so in particular, for domestic violence, when we order someone to get a domestic violence assessment, that can be extremely expensive, and it's not typically something that's covered by insurance. One of the strategies that we have come to use in certain cases, if it seems appropriate, is to order mental health evaluations for an offender versus a domestic violence assessment. A mental health assessment typically will be covered by even state insurance and allows for offenders to actually get some help and not have to be in violation because they couldn't afford the treatment. But that is an issue. I mean, that's been an issue in every court that I've ever worked in, is that it's a challenge to be able to, these are 90, however many percent of our defendants are indigent. They're qualified for public defender services, and then we're telling them to go get treatment, and they don't have insurance, or they have state insurance, and so it's a challenge.
And I guess my last question would be, what role does Western State Hospital play in terms of creating work?
We don't see a lot of cases coming out of Western State. You're talking about assaults that are occurring at the hospital, or?
Or any of the, in any cases that end up in our court.
Well, mental health is a huge challenge. The laws have changed in the last year, and so when we have somebody that we're evaluating for competency, if they're found to be not competent, we are no longer sending them to Western State for restoration. That was, that was a change, that we were having people toiling away in a jail for 45-plus days, waiting to go to Western State for restoration, and it was just not happening. And so through the true blood settlement and through changes in the law, we, if somebody is not competent in almost all cases, the case is dismissed and they're held and referred to a mental health professional, I don't believe that, very often, that they're ever taken to Western State Hospital. I just don't think the capacity is there. It's a problem. We see a lot of people with significant mental health issues, and unfortunately, there's just not the resources being put towards that to address it.
So I guess in, in what, you gave us some statistics about filings. What percentage of the filings for criminal cases end up in this competency concern bucket?
I don't have an answer for you on that, but I will look to see if I can glean that. I don't, we don't keep a statistic offhand that I'm aware of, but I will certainly look into that and get back to you.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much for your time tonight and your service.
Thank you very much. It's an honor to serve Lakewood and the other jurisdictions as well. Thank you for your attention tonight. Appreciate it.
You're welcome. Thank you. Now, it appears we have a review of the Washington Boulevard-Graffy Lake Drive Design Project. I assume we have Mr. Bucic and Mr.?
I'd like to call up our Public Works Engineering Director, Paul Bucic, to give you a briefing.
you a briefing on this. And as you've heard before, this is something that we have fast-tracked, this proposal to design not just Washington Boulevard, but also Gravel Lake Drive. And the reasoning for this is to be able to have a project that is as close to shovel-ready as possible so that we can apply for a hopefully upcoming DCIP grant. So with that, Mr. Bucic.
Let me ask you a quick question. So does the fact that the Gravel Lake Drive portion of the project is designed, I think it is right, it's all ready to go, enhance the opportunity for the other one to be shovel-ready or vice versa?
So it would be the latter. However, going back to the former, Gravel Lake Drive Phase Two has not been designed.
Oh, it hasn't? Okay.
No. And so the motivation for combining them is because if you take the two the value of the two projects, which is about a little over eighteen million, and then the fact that Gravel Lake Drive is fully funded, which is four and a half million, plus we have three million allocated in support of the Washington Boulevard project, that percentage is much greater than kind of the minimum twenty percent that that DCIP is asking for and hopefully will get us a higher rating when it competes with other projects nationwide. Also, as Mr. Bucis has pointed out to me, by actually including Gravel Lake Drive, it connects to I-5 and he believes and I agree with him that that will resonate very, very well with the folks at Department of Defense from a transportation purpose.
Great.
So with that, I'm sorry, Mr. Bucic.
Good evening, Deputy Mayor, members of the City Council, and thank you to the city manager for making my presentation for me tonight. I am done. I'm able to answer any questions you may have.
It's perfect.
I will start off by stating that being engineers, we like to go to old school sometimes. So our presentation is on a piece of insulation foam core from Lowe's because the regular foam core is $400 and that was $8. And we're cheap. We'd rather put the money in the ground where it belongs. The city manager basically gave you a great outline of what we're doing and why we're doing it. Let me just say that when he came to me and said, guess what, there's $50 million and we have to have a shovel-ready project by June, after my jaw came up off the ground, we started strategizing about the best way to do this. As the city manager indicated, we decided that combining a couple of available projects right now actually made us present better on the project. Gravel Lake Drive project from Washington Boulevard down to Nianta was going to be designed in 2020, constructed in 2021. With me tonight is Troy Pockswinski. Many of you know him. Councilmember Farmer, you haven't had the pleasure of meeting Troy directly, but he's one of our top design engineers. He would love to have designed the Washington Boulevard project, but when we sat down and went through it, we realized that we don't have available resources internally to do this all by ourselves. So what we came up with a strategy, which is we would combine those two projects, the full length of the corridor, Washington Boulevard, all the way to the North Fort entrance, the Gravel Lake project because it's a fully funded project and it gives us that higher percentage where we're struggling, we want to have, not struggling, we want to have for our grant application. And then we did a lot of strategizing about the fact that, hey, you know what, we're going to have a brand new road called Veterans Drive and it's going to funding available go right into the VA hospital. How about if we throw in Vernon? Because Vernon now gives a connection between our two major corridors, Washington Boulevard and Veterans, and it makes it easy for the VA patients, the retired veterans who live in Lakewood, Silicon, Dupont, and Point South to very effectively come through our community from either direction and get to the VA hospital very quickly. We thought that that might be a nice selling feature considering who the the funding source is coming from. So all told, when we figured out how we needed to do this, we figured out we needed resources, we needed help. So we went through the MRSC roster of consultants. Troy and Weston Art, the Capital Projects, our program manager, came to me with a list of five different potential large firms we thought would have capacity. We reached out to all five of those firms and one of them told us, we'd love to do it, but we don't have capacity to get it done in the timeframe you need. Two of the firms, Parametrics and BCRA, two firms that are doing workforce and have done workforce, both on the Onyx as well as the Veterans Project, and then BCRA did the first leg around the Gravel Lake Drive last year and completed that. They decided that by teaming up, they were going to be able to meet our timeline with the resources combined between the two of them. We held interviews on Thursday, this is two Thursdays ago, and we notified Parametrics, BCRA, that they were the selected firm Friday morning. And at one o'clock Friday afternoon, we were sitting down with them negotiating scope, schedule, and budget. They already had the scope developed, they already had their resources allocated, they already had all their subconsultants committed to the timeframe. They basically came ready to play. So we met with them on Friday, we went through the scope, we went through the budget, talked about resources necessary, we told them they were too high. They agreed because their proposal was based on what they knew at the time prior to the interview. Remember, we gave these firms basically two weeks' notice before we entered them and interviewed and got through this. We met them again on Monday, went through their allocation, they were still pulling some numbers together, we told them they we still felt they were too high for the work. On Tuesday, they came back with a proposal of the 1.9 million plus change you see before you that we feel is going to be sufficient and adequate and appropriate for the design of this three and a half mile corridor. What we did do was we asked them to pull out the final ninety percent to hundred percent cost to make the plans fully a hundred percent if we were going to do a regular bidding process, in part because we don't know what all the provisions of the DCIP grant are going to be. So we wanted to hold a little bit in reserve in thought in the thinking that when we know what the grant's going to be more like, we'll know whether ninety percent is shovel-ready good enough for them or if they're going to allow us to submit for the final design of maybe a hundred and fifty, $200,000 as a part of the grant application or through this as we come as we develop the design, if we have cost savings that we can now use towards the next piece. We also agreed that because of the the rapid nature in which we had to put all this together, that we know that there are some unknowns that were probably going to pop up. So we put into the contract $100,000 management reserve so that enables us to meet our mark, meet our timelines. So the 1.9 million already has $100,000 of management reserve. That means that when we know more about the grant and if they want provisions, say we need to have, well, we know we're going to need to have an economic analysis done. We know we're going to have to have a couple of other analyses done. If we don't have those already covered, we can execute that work right away and get it moving. And then we'll be we'll be coming back to council should we need more money in order to complete this. Our budget ask, what we've been working with Todd Kraus and John, is 2.25 million is our cost, we think, to complete this all the way through. We have the funding available for that in the allocated funds between Gravel Lake Drive and the money that we had set aside for the basically the double roundabout, which the city manager has been indicating for the last year and a half that that is our seed money that we're going to put up as our match for the DCIP program when it eventually got funded. Speaking of which, I think everybody was a little bit surprised how fast it got funded. John shared with me that he got on the plane with the mayor to go to DC in December and the DCIP program was dead. They got off the plane, not only was it a lie, but it had $50 million. So we had to put on our track shoes and start running. That's what we've been doing. We believe that putting these components together in the way that we have makes us a very attractive project to the feds. There's a clear route for JBLM personnel equipment to get from North Fort to I-5 and downtown Lakewood with this project. By the use of the roundabouts, it removes slowdowns due to signals, not only for the military, but also all the people using this corridor. It provides a clear connection for the veterans living, you know, like I said, in Lakewood, Silicon, Dupont, to get to the VA hospital. That's a winning winning combination. Provides a path, and this is an important one, it provides a path for JBLM resources to get through Lakewood back on to I-5 should I-5 be shut down from accidents, climatic conditions, or as many of you on the council know, the anticipated 100-year flooding of I-5, which is two to three feet of water across it, that will also shut down Pack Highway and Bridgeport in that vicinity. So this is going to be a clear route. We're going to show them, working with SSMC P on on what the work that they're doing right now, showing the routes through the region, show them how they can get through Lakewood back on to I-5 or use the main corridor down South Tacoma Way to get to the Port of Tacoma, which is a critical departure point for the military forces. So how are we going to do this? Like I said, five and a half months, a dedicated team of professionals working very hard and very diligently on this project. We will be working to develop a public outreach plan. We're going to be working with the residents on both legs of this as well as the businesses who have their their establishments along the Washington Boulevard. We've already met with Lakewood Water District, we've notified the Pierce County Sewers, they've requested a standalone meeting even though the sewer district, the sewers doesn't feel they have any any projects. Lakewood Water District is a little bit worried because they had a water line that they were going to replace in Gravel Lake Drive. So even though we haven't got a contract, we're already scheduling meetings with them. And then last week at our utilities coordination meeting, we broached this to all the other utilities, let them know this is coming, we need you to get on board with us because we're not going to have the ability to stop. We've already notified the consultants if there is a problem. Troy will be meeting with them weekly, if not daily initially, but we need to know about it right away and try to avoid the major transmission lines on Washington Boulevard because those have a long lead time and we can't afford for us to wait and figure out how to make that happen. I know that there was some mention of a concern about Lakewood Gardens. I actually had spoken to a nice lady there months ago when she got wind of our project. That was the veterans when we were looking at the feasibility of roundabout. And I assured her then, and we will be reaching out to them shortly, that our project will take into consideration their needs and their concerns. As a part of that, we've already ordered the survey for Gravel Lake Drive and AHBL, who did the survey on the other components of this work, are working on that right now. They'll deliver that to the design team, but they've been asked to put up some flagging along the corridor where Lakewood Gardens is so they can see clearly what is city right away and what is their property. And then we can start looking at how our project may or may not actually impact them. But for all of the residents and all the businesses, we're going to be working very closely with them to make sure that what we come up with actually works for them. That being said, the other part of this is within the next two weeks, we're going to be having an internal design suret with all the department heads and their senior staff to sit down with our consultants to start laying out what this project is going to look like. And after that, and we're talking to the public, our intention is to come back to council first part of March to say, here's what we've heard, here's what the design looks like. As you'll notice, when you look at this or if you go and look at it closely, you'll see there's there's proposed up to 10 roundabouts. That means we'll be losing five traffic signals. Personally, I'm in favor of that because traffic signals tend to be a bit of a bother. They lose power. People don't know how to use them properly. It's going to require us to educate our community about how to use roundabouts, how to use roundabouts effectively. Not every one of those is for sure, but if we're going to go with a Boulevard look with a center-planted median on Washington Boulevard, we have to be able to give people an opportunity to get back in the direction they want to go. The roundabouts do that most effectively. Okay? If we decide not to do that, and that's going to be a decision in the council, we're going to ask you to mull on when we come back to give some clear direction. Our understanding is this is a Boulevard. It's going to have a planted medium of median of some form. When we do that, cars can't get crossed it. We already have accommodated the fire department's request to make sure there's enough room for them to be on the path of vehicle by putting the the bike lanes, dedicated bike lanes on the road. So there's actually 18 feet enough room. I'm probably giving you more detail than you want to know, but I wanted to let you know that we've been thinking about this for some time and all of this is going to be happening very, very quickly. We're going to be hitting 30% design in, I think it's six weeks or less, and then after that, 30 days to 60%, another six weeks to hit 90%. So this is flying. Yes, this is this is flying. Everyone who has been involved in this has been told this project cannot cannot miss its milestones. We cannot afford to miss applying and successfully applying for the DCIP grant. City of Lakewood was one of the reasons why that exists and we do not want to disappoint anybody on not hitting that targeted window. I think I've said enough and I think I'm going to pause and ask if you have any questions on what I've said as well as the memo before you tonight.
Well, thank you, Mr. Bucic. I have several questions as to, I'm sure, other members. Real quick, PCRC last week, there was a call for projects that was put out. I'm sure you probably see the thick packet. Will any of those components of the 21 million coming to the county, could they qualify in part for some of the monies you may need for this?
That's not our current plan right now. We have other projects that we think are fairly well queued up to apply for it.
Okay. Okay. And then just remind us of sequencing. So in terms of veterans versus Washington, assuming the design piece is done, just so I can get in my head the timing of construction.
That's a good question. It has always been our intention to design and construct veterans first.
Right.
Because we knew that the Washington Boulevard is going to have a large traffic impact. We want to have veterans done so we can reroute traffic over to veterans to the best of our ability. In the meantime, though, when we're doing veterans, we want to have Washington Boulevard available because we're looking at the possibility of basically shutting off veterans for a block at a time to allow the contractor to get through it faster and then divert people through side streets and also a Vernon over onto Washington Boulevard itself.
So it's a little bit up in the air, it sounds like, still?
Well, no, Veterans is going first.
Okay.
It's going to be constructed first.
Is that this year, '20?
Yeah, yeah.
By the end of '20, it'll be done?
Veterans will be going out to bid, I think it's, if I remember correctly, mid to late February, because if you may recall from a week or two ago, we want to bid Onyx first because if we have savings in the funding, we want to reallocate that over to to veterans so we can complete the project.
Go to the hospital all the way. And then in terms of the the design monies for Washington Boulevard, what are the current sources again? I know we had some money set aside. Where are we getting the money?
In the memo you have, it shows the identified funding sources on the last page.
Okay. General obligation bonds, I see that. Two million. Yeah, the unfunded TBD, right?
The thing too that assures me is that we had fully funded for the Gravel Lake Drive of four and a half million, different sources of funding, but basically no grant funds on that one.
Mm-hmm.
And we had close to $3 million of available funding for the quote double roundabout on Washington Boulevard. So when you look at those, we have almost seven and a half million dollars of realized funding that is not a a hope and a prayer with a with a grant application to a state or federal agency. So we have more than enough to cover our costs for doing the full design. If by some unfortunate reason we are not successful in getting the full funding, then we will have three projects, basically. We can separate out Vernon and hold on that to a later date, but we'll have the available funds to complete the Gravel Lake Drive project. So we would proceed forward with that one as a separate one.
There's no right-of-way acquisition? There's a little bit there, 60,000 I see right-of-way costs, but?
On the Washington Boulevard project, we've estimated 60. We think it's going to be less, but but the roundabouts in a couple of different locations take a little corner of a property.
Right.
If it looks like that that's going to cause us any problems as far as timing, we will work very diligently to reduce or eliminate that right-of-way need so that we don't miss our target window. One of the biggest areas is at Interlocken on Washington Boulevard. That's the biggest take. That is also, I would consider, the most problematic location.
Right.
So when we're looking at this very quickly, we'll be determining whether the roundabout will will work there, will fit in there. And if we have willing property owners, otherwise we'll have to look at other options. And I've I've proposed to the firms, take a look at, and this is going to be a major change, but something we need to think about, the right-in, right-out option only. One of the biggest challenges there is people churning left, trying to dash across traffic to get into Interlocken or worse, get out of Interlocken when you got people coming from the slip lane, you got people coming to the intersection, you got people coming from the right. It's just a hazardous condition.
Yeah, it's tough.
Traffic loading has gotten high.
And and all this design is to be done by when for 1.9 million? March, April?
June 30th.
June 30th.
Yeah, don't don't make it any sooner, please.
Yeah.
That's a lot of money.
That would be hard.
Yeah. Go ahead. You had a question, Mr. Bokin and Mr. Branstadter? Go ahead, Mike.
Yeah, Mr. Bucic, in your in your memo, you indicated that the design team would be able to start work on February 3rd following authorization from the council. That February 3rd is is also our very next regular meeting. What what form does authorization from the council need to take? A motion for authorizing the city manager to enter into the contract? A, a, a motion for authorizing the city manager to enter into the contract?
Actually, next Monday, which is a normal study session, we've requested a special council meeting for the express purpose of authorizing the city manager to execute this contract. So you'll have a special council meeting right before the study session. When that goes through next Monday, then we'll be delivering the contract to the consultants. I actually think that if everything goes well, we'll be starting that week. We won't be, they don't want to wait till February 3rd. This is a really tight timeline.
Thank you.
Mr. Boki?
So a couple of questions, if I can remember them. The idea is you put this whole project together, it becomes an 18 and a quarter million dollar project. And then the federal ask is then 10.7 million, basically.
Probably going to be closer to 12.
Okay, 12. So you're at about 66%, two-thirds. And that may, and that, that's your comfort level to say, we think we have a better project or, or a better chance to win because we're, what we're putting in is a higher amount?
I think that helps the case. It makes it more attractive from the, from the grant agency's perspective. That means the city's more all in than not. But it's not the only story. The rest of the story is the connectivity through Gravely Lake Drive down to Nynza at I-5 and the connection through Vernon. So we've looked at how many different ways we can try to make this project attractive to the federal government, the military, the, the D O D. We'll be looking for letters of support from DuPont, from J B L M leadership, from Town of Silicon, from anybody and everybody who we think would have a reason to support this project. Those will all be a part of the, the package we send in.
So in my mind, there's a difference, and, and help, help me out. The, a difference between veterans and Washington, just from Paul's perspective as a citizen of Lakewood. The traffic volumes are less on veterans. Veterans, although an arterial of some sort, is not, isn't asked to do the same thing. And one of the reasons that we're talking about this is that Washington has become a magnet for cut-through traffic for I-5. And it, well, as you said, I mean, so we're really just now admitting, right, that this is a problem. That Washington is a problem for us because a lot of traffic diverse off I-5. There's been growth on North Fort. There's a lot of reasons why. So is, what, is the design, first of all, what are the differences or what are the approximate traffic levels differences between veterans and Washington? And are we engineering Washington for the current levels or for, I mean, how much more traffic could it handle realistically?
Well, right now, Washington Boulevard handles about twice the level of traffic as Veterans Drive.
Okay.
Veterans will have a speed limit of 30 miles an hour, then down to 25. You're absolutely right. It is different from Washington Boulevard. It is not typically a cut-through. Because of the development that's gone on outside of our community, whether that be on J B L M, Silicon, DuPont, Point South, people are using it to get through. It, the impact shows. It shows on the wear and tear on the infrastructure, it shows on wear and tear on the community as you go through it. The design is through 2040. One of the advantages of roundabouts is that they can handle a lot more traffic than a traffic signal. So when you're designing for 2040, you're really looking at a design that even exceeds that life.
Yeah.
Because you don't have equipment that is going to fail. You don't have a traffic si-, um, timing you have to redo. You don't have to worry, worry about master controllers or anything else. So there's a, and, and you've heard us speak before about the value and benefit of roundabouts as far as accidents, collisions, fatalities, injuries. So the numbers keep showing out, no matter how you look at them, the roundabouts are a better traffic option. Now, there are some areas where they don't, just don't make sense because of the cost. We spoke to that on the Onyx Drive project, whereas at one intersection, conceptually, they were looking at, we were looking at a year and a half ago, a roundabout, but the traffic load just doesn't, doesn't warrant it, doesn't warrant the cost. Sticking with a stop-controlled intersection that we can, we can in the future make it to a three-leg stop control makes more sense. In this particular case, we believe that the roundabouts here with the traffic load we have going on will work better. The modeling shows it flows better.
Which traffic lights are you intending to, under this ma-, under this study or plan? Which ones are you pulling out? Vernon?
We're going to, let's start from the I-5 leg. So Nynza, that kind of odd intersection there with a couple of different slip lanes. And Gravely Lake Drive at the bottom there.
Okay.
That one signal's going to go away. It's a three-leg intersection. It's almost ideally set up for a roundabout. When you move up, and we've got a traffic at Veterans. If you may recall, when we did the initial work with parametrics for the 30%, we did a conceptual proof of concept to see if a roundabout would work there, would fit. The answer is yes. So that's another traffic signal we're going to lose.
Okay.
Gravely Lake Drive and Washington Boulevard, that's a big one. We're going to lose that one. That's number three. Then moving on down to Vernon slash Butte and Washington Boulevard, where there's the two former gas stations. That's the intersection. We're going to lose that traffic light, so there's four. And then going all the way down to Edgewood, that's number five. We're going to lose that traffic light there.
So, so the, and the only one that I questioned there, and I'm not a traffic engineer, so I'm not going to challenge you on it, but I'll, I'll question you on it. The Gravely Lake, Washington.
Yes.
That has the most traffic. It seems to back up in every direction on a s- streetlight in the mornings or something. So you feel comfortable that if we just keep a roundabout and keep, people will keep moving and it'll all work out?
Of all the ones that we've looked at and done modeling on, that one's the one that we've done the most on.
Okay.
And consistently it shows that under future projected traffic growth, the only way we can make that work effectively is with a roundabout. Now, does that mean that you couldn't put a traffic signal in there? Yes. But that also means you're going to have a bigger impact on the residents who live out there, even though they may not believe it. We've had a series of meetings with some of the folks who live on the access drive just to the northeast of the intersection. Last name starts with a W, I think you can figure out the rest of it, who have big estates right there on the lake. And they had a lot of concerns. And so Troy and I met with them and Weston a couple of times last year to talk about their concerns and came up with a couple of renditions on a roundabout and then a bypass, single-lane road that allowed them to get in and out. The problem is, is that where their driveway is, at some point, they're not going to be able to turn left in and left out. It'll just be unsafe. So when we design this thing, we need to make sure that they can get in and out in the future, too. We looked at the traffic signal in there, takes up a lot of room. Takes up a lot of room because we have two lanes going through it in one direction that we only need to do, uh, the roundabout won't have as big of a footprint.
So you're going to have one lane or two lanes? So if I wanted to, let's say I'm going north.
Before I have Troy kick me in the backside on that, since he did all the design on it. But I'm going to suggest that when we come back in March, we're going to come back with some visuals. So it's going to show you how the traffic will flow through all the roundabouts and up and down the road. I would rather do that than have you thinking about, well, I didn't, let us finish the work and show you how it will work.
We lay it out on a table like we did before?
Um, yeah. And we're also going to have a visual representation, a little video that will show how roundabouts work and work effectively and how it'll work through here.
Great. Any other questions? Thank you for the update. We look forward to more and for Mr. Coffield to bring home 11 million from the federal government. No later than March 31st. Be awesome.
Thank you for your time. Just a few, a few more updates, if I might. You know, we got the 2020 census coming up. And so to help do outreach at the local level, we applied for a, a grant because we're very limited in the capacity and resources that we have to do that. And so we were fortunate to receive a $40,000 grant. It comes from the federal government through the state and is actually being managed by the Greater Tacoma Community Foundation. So we'll be using the money for, you know, personnel costs as well as promotional materials and just general census activities. We're also looking to convene a census committee. And don't know if it's going to be really an official one or more of a committee that's a little looser and broader. Because what we want to do is we want to have individual, individual or individuals to get into our more underserved areas where perhaps they have a little bit of a resistance to be encountered for one reason or another. And also maybe using interns and some students and things, and things along those lines. But we want to make sure that we get a proper count of everybody in, in, in Lakewood. And there's a number of reasons for that, and I'm sure you've seen a number of articles on that. So, but, so again, we were fortunate to be able to secure the funding to be able to do this. And so over the next six months, that's what we're going to, we're going to do. And we'll work very closely with the federal government, the census, as well as actually, most importantly, our Pierce County auditor, Julie Anderson, who's actually been fantastic in helping spearhead the regional approach on this. I think, as you know, last week, the state legislature, they kicked off, hundreds of bills are being dropped. So really, such as a short session, what I look for is what's the cutoff date? It's got to make it out of committee, and that's February 7th, which is good news, is right around the corner. Because there's, there's a lot of good bills and there's a lot of other bills that, quite frankly, we, we being cities and local governments could probably be okay with doing, doing without. Our high priority right now is to get the budget proviso language regarding our $250,000 ask for the multimodal transportation study. So this week, we're going to be touching bases with our six legislators to get them to sign the letter that would be sent to the respective transportation committee's chairs and ranking members in both the House and the Senate. And we're hoping to get that done this, this, this week. You know, earlier this evening, there was a recognition of, you know, Dr. Martin Luther King. And I want to, you know, commend our communications manager, Bryn Grimley, as well as some of her colleagues from the school district and the Lakewood branch of the Y M C A for developing hidden heroes. And I don't know if you've actually seen that video. Part of that is, you know, we wanted, over the years, we've been trying to get, okay, how can we get more community involvement, engagement with the M L K event that the city sponsors every year? Because quite frankly, sometimes it feels like it's the usual suspects that are, that are showing up. And I've been working with the new superintendent to try and get kids in. I even offered to pay for transportation. He's like, no, we got it, we got it. So that's something. And then on the communication side, Bryn Grimley really took the, you know, took the lead in, in working with her colleagues in developing this. And if you haven't seen that video, it's absolutely fantastic. And so about once a week, they're going to be sending out a video, you know, recognizing and celebrating, you know, you know, some African-American individuals who have done really great things here in not just Pacific Northwest, but the United States. So more, more, more to follow on that. We are scheduled for the J B L M orientation next Monday from 09 to noon. And so I'm, I'm working on the logistics with the chief of staff. In addition to the seven who are attending from the city, we're also going to be joined by Colonel Brian Collins, who is the new incoming vice commander of the second 62nd airlift wing, because he is also going to be giving a briefing. And so it's going to be one hour getting a briefing on the base, followed by a two-hour windshield tour of, of, of the facility, mostly in the urban areas, won't get out too far out into the training areas. But it'll, if you haven't been on one before, it'll be worthwhile to see kind of what goes on, 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 on base. So last week, the state Supreme Court ruled that on clean air, and long story short, reaffirmed ecology's authority to regulate greenhouse gases and to regulate emissions. And why that's important is because the Puget Sound Clean Air Agency is proposing a regional clear fuel standard, which we believe is in complete contradiction to that ruling by the state Supreme Court. And as you know, this body approved us sending a letter to the P S, P S C C A in December. And given this recent ruling, we have prepared another letter that we'd like to share with you in the next week or so. Just again, expressing our concerns with what they're doing and that really, at the end of the day, this is the responsibility of the state and particularly the state legislature. So more, more, more to follow on, on that. Just wanted to note, you know, Mr. Bucic and his team, they were trying to figure, okay, what do you, what do we call this project? Washington Boulevard to Gravely and then back over to Edgewood and North Gate Road. And so we're trying to come up with a comprehensive name that will also garner some interest from the folks at the Pentagon who are going to be ultimately appropriating the money as well as O E A. And so we've come up with J B L M North Access Improvement Project. And, but then within the description will be all the various roads and that will be, that will be impacted. Last week, I noted that Representative Rick Larson was going to be submitting, dropping the bill on what's called buildup, which would provide transportation funding for cities with a population of 20,000 to 70,000, which is something that we have been advocating for a number of years. However, the bill is temporarily on hold because there was some, it needs some changes to the language that's, that Congressional Legal Council identified. Because the language that was about to be dropped actually didn't do what we thought it was going to be doing. And so our team is working with them, with Mr. Larson's office and a number of other cities to square that away. And then once that happens, then Mr. Larson will drop the bill in probably the next week, week or two. And I'll keep you posted on, on that. Last week, this body talked about the follow-up on the housing affordability funding for, from the House Bill 1406 from last session. You know, one of the discussions that you had was, did you want to implement one of, one of the qualifying taxes that are available? One of the four, of which three require voter approval. And the three are affordable housing levy, sales and use tax for housing, and a property tax levy specifically for housing. And then the fourth one, which does not require a vote of the people, is the one-tenth of 1% for mental health and chemical dependency, that typically all the, most of the counties in Washington State have implemented except for Pierce County. And then one city is done at the city of Tacoma. So if you want to move forward with one of those voter-approved initiatives, then you need to be on the ballot for April 28th. So we've gone back and looked at when this would need to go on the ballot. In order to go and, and, because the next ballot after that is August 4th, and the state legislature says you have to have something in place by July 27th. So August 4th is too late. So that means April 28th. To get on the April 28th ballot, you would need to have a resolution and other documents in place and adopted by this body, including, you know, forming committees for statements against and statements for by February 28th, which is five weeks from now. So can it be done? Yes, it can be, it can be done. We expect to come back to you with continued discussion on, last week's discussion on February 18th. I just wanted to bring that to your attention. It was kind of new to us that you had an interest in pursuing one of those voter-approved initiatives. But if it's something that you do want to do, I just wanted to make it, make you all aware that the deadline is February 28th to get that over to Pierce County elections. Also, we are not aware of any other municipality that's going to be moving forward with a voter-approved initiative on April. So the city of Lakewood would have to pay for it all, and the cost estimate is $167,000 to put it on the ballot. Whereas typically, what municipalities will do is they'll go on the primary or the general election because they can share the cost with a number of other municipalities. Not trying to be a wet blanket, just wanted to bring that forward to you as a follow-up from your discussion last week.
Comment on that? I, I didn't, maybe I misread, but I didn't get a great sense of consensus from the council to push for a voter-approved tax provision on that. I may be wrong, but I didn't get that sense, but I appreciate the information.
Well, we, we took it as, that you were looking for information, and I just wanted to...
No, no, that's great.
Yeah. Well, and actually, Deputy Mayor, a couple of council members did say they supported...
The operative word is consensus.
I understand, I understand. I just want, I just want to keep you appraised.
Over the years, yeah.
Also, I was talking to Mayor Anderson before he went out of town, and he asked me a question specific to the one-tenth of 1%.
Okay.
And his question was this. If the county moves forward with their one-tenth of 1%, could the city of Lakewood, during their process, step in and pass our own one-tenth of 1% so that the county doesn't get it all? Because if the county council implements the one-tenth of 1%, like all other counties, they collect it from the whole county with the exception of Tacoma, because Tacoma's the only city in the state that did it by themselves. And so the short answer of that, from a logistical standpoint, is yes. Typically, and the, the city attorney followed up with the county, typically... Typically, and the, the city attorney followed up with the county, typically from start to finish, the process that the county council has to go through to implement a tax increase takes at least five weeks. It's gotta go through a number of committees, and then on top of that, it has to have a supermajority vote. So the mayor asked me, okay, so could this body then do something quicker? And again, the short answer is yes. Now, I'm not saying that that's, you should do that, because I think there needs to be, you know, communication with the public and things along those lines. And then he asked, then if the county doesn't move forward, could it be, you know, could then this body rescind it? And the short answer on that is yes, albeit there would probably be some hoops to, to jump through.
So maybe, yeah, Mr. Bogie can educate us on that. So from what I hear you say, is if the county passes it, it creates a vacuum that would preclude a city within the county from passing-
That's correct. That is correct. Because when the county implements it, it's applied county-wide, statutorily.
Right.
Yeah.
But wouldn't that perhaps be a better thing?
I'll just, yeah, today at study session, the, one of the sponsors of the one-tenth of one percent announced that she would like, she is going to propose a county-wide one-tenth of one percent for mental health, and that she hoped that the final vote would be in March. So it has, it's not in the hopper yet, but it'll be there soon.
Do they have a plan for what they would do with the money once raised?
I don't know. They, they kind of took off, it's my understanding, they took the one they did a couple, two or three years ago, that they actually voted on in these chambers. And they were one vote short, and kind of dusted that off. I don't know the spending plan, so, but it was just, it was just announced at study session today that, that they were hoping for March.
Mr. Brandstetter.
Yeah, you know, I, I, I think there's two different scenarios here. If it looks like the county is going to move forward with imposing the one percent, you know, with a reasonable expectation that, that that's going to, going to move through, then I think that it is, it would be good for us to expedite and do that as a city initiative as well, if only so that we have some control over the fund, the one percent, one-tenth of one percent that's, would be raised from sales taxes within the city. Because, because even in that situation, we could partner with the county and combine them and do that if there's a vending plan, or we can, can do something. So, you know, that's, that's a, that's a strategic option that's out there. But I do think that we, as a body, apart from that, should consider, as the only other city in Pierce County, that has the statutory authority to actually impose and use and, and develop a, an investment strategy for those funds, we should have a discussion that is not triggered by, well, the county might do it, so we, we have to defensively do it, but, but is that something that we really ought to do? And I think we should have that discussion, particularly as our, our council member Simpson is not here, but I think he was advocating for that at that last meeting. And, you know, in, in terms of the, the, the city manager mentioning that, you know, the February 18th, I believe, was the date that he talked about being able to bring something back. But I, that's, that's a regular meeting, in where we just get a presentation, and I think this is a topic that we need to have a little bit more of a discussion view. And the study session on February 10th is, as our study sessions go, is actually fairly light in terms of an agenda. It's got fireworks on it, and it's got something to do that. Well, it doesn't look, based on what I can see from the proposed items on that agenda, that, to be able to go and do that. But, but I'd rather do that at a, I'd rather have that, make sure we have that discussion, and I would, you know, and it may be short, or it may be, maybe longer. And I'm not really sure where I would, 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 would be on that sitting here today, but I, I think I'd like to have that at a study session piece to do that. And, and to do it before we have our goal-setting retreat, so that we know whether something about this informs what we're thinking about in terms of goals.
So Ms. Farmer, and then maybe we throw it to Mr. Coffield to educate us about the breadth of the study session as currently planned, maybe challenging to toss us in there. Go ahead.
I do agree with Councilwoman Brandstetter that having a conversation with more information would be extremely helpful. Being new, I'll play the new card. I would be particularly interested in knowing, advantageous-wise, if the county does it versus if the city does it, and then swooping in and backing out. So I want to make sure that I, I have that properly scoped.
Just before I get to your agenda, the one-tenth of one percent, in terms of how the monies can be used, and we estimate, based on current taxable retail activity in Lakewood, probably $900,000 to $1 million a year. And in year one, 50% of that money statutorily can be used to supplant existing programs. So for example, we have a behavioral health task, task team that is funded with a combination of general fund dollars and human services funding, which also, the one percent, which also comes from the general fund. So this new funding could be used to supplant that. However, the supplantion decreases over a three-year period from 50% to 33% to 25%, if I recall reading, reading the statute on that. So I just wanted to put that out there. So what that means is that, that one percent, that one-tenth of one percent funding has to be used for new programs, new investments, above and beyond what we're doing. But you do have flexibility to supplant existing programs and free up, you know, general fund money, because you always want to protect your general fund for basic services. So just wanted to point that out. The reason that this, this item is coming back on February 18th is because of the number of priorities that you have. And the report on the 18th is actually a, as a follow-up from your study session, is not a comprehensive review, as you're talking about here, because again, I'm just sharing information. But what you asked for was a draft ordinance to put in place regarding how you want to use the 1406 funding. And, and just based on your schedule, would like to review that with you on the 18th, and then have council take action on that at your next regular meeting on March 2nd. Now, if I misunderstood what you asked for at your last meeting-
Was that the half-funding, for lack of a better word?
That's correct.
Yeah.
Now, if, if, because you did not give me direction to go back and schedule time to talk about using the one-tenth of one percent, using, you know, I interpreted it as, yeah, we want to see an ordinance. So that's the purpose of the 18th. Now, if you want to go back and have a discussion on these items that you're brought up here, we can do that. I just need to know that, because that wasn't my understanding at, at the end of your last study session.
I think we discussed bringing back an ordinance for review and discussion for the, what was it, the .7 whatever it was, but not for the 1 point whatever, which would require one of those taxing-
Right.
Bits.
And what you asked for at, at the study session was what it would take to put something in a place, and that's what I'm reporting on to you this evening.
Got it. Okay. Any deviation from that? I think that was the plan, so that's coming back to us.
But we can, we can move, we can move things around, and-
Well, the only exigent circumstance is if we really wanted to get a voter-approved portion of that available tax money on the ballot, then we'd really have to scramble. And I don't sense consensus for us to do that right now. Like I said, I don't recall a consensus. I do recall Mr. Simpson bringing up an issue, but I don't recall-
Well, I, I interpreted from several council members that there was interest, not that they wanted to do it, but they wanted, they wanted information.
No, I appreciate that.
That's-
Yeah, we're not, not maligning the messenger, we appreciate that. But I don't sense, I know the mayor would not be inclined to put a voter-approved tax initiative on the ballot. So in the absence of three other people saying yay to do that, I think we're back to where the city manager suggested we are, which is the discussion of the proposed ordinance for the adoption of the lesser sum available to cities, which is effectively a credit, coming back to the city from the sales tax.
Yeah, from the state, yeah.
As opposed to an additional tax on the public. Right?
That's correct. So then, so then, so if you don't want to move forward with one of the three, which is the voter-approved, do you want to set a, a special study session to talk about the one-tenth of one percent sales tax?
Which would be a different opportunity down the road.
That's a different, that's correct.
Well, I think it sounds like we might want to do that down the road, but there's no, unless people want to get ahead of the county in March.
That's, that's correct. And I, and I just learned now that they were looking to do it in March.
Right.
As of today, right.
So it sounds like February 10 wouldn't be the time to do that, but there's not a lot of time between February 10 and March, whenever the county might, I, I don't know why we would want to jump anyway. I think, I don't know, I open it up for discussion. I, I would not be one to feel the need to jump to big study session on that issue. I think it's important to have some discussion down the road, but I don't know why we have to do it between now and March. That's just me.
There, there are things we can bump on the 10th, or February 24th for that matter, and, and bring back information on the one-tenth of one percent.
You guys want to try that on February 24th?
Yeah, and again, I, I think the focus of the discussion, while it includes discussion about the option of, of what we would do with $900,000 a year if we imposed that tax, the, the issue is, I think that we should have a discussion, is, is there a viable, effective strategy at a city level that we can work on with respect to mental health that'll make a difference? And I think, you know, we've, we've, we've had that discussion about housing, and we've sort of figured out that, that, that our best strategy, given that we have a lot of affordable housing, but it's declining in quality, that are, that are, that, that we can't effectively work on housing in a, in a, in a way that, that is, is keeping the housing stock that we have safe, viable living. But we've, we've not ever really sat down where we, we've really talked about, are there city-level initiatives beyond the mental health, the team that we have with the, with the police department, and the, the small amount of mental health providers that we help with one percent dollars? You know, is there a, is there a good use that we can justify, or that we would want to investigate with making a substantial investment of, you know, because 900,000 is more like a 3% all towards one? And I think we should at least discuss that. And, and the discussion may be, this is more, much more of a regional issue, and we're better off letting the county pool it and work that too. I mean, that's, that's the other option that, that's on the table, but, you know, I, I think we should look at the, a, a big picture of that, rather than just have short discussions about individual programs, or of a limited discussion only about, should we impose a tax or not impose a tax? Because, because the issue is, you know, you know, what are, what are you accomplishing by what, what do you want to do, and what are we, you know, what do we want to see being, being done? You know, the, I think we've, we've asked the community services advisory folks to, to look at this over, over the past four years, and they've never really come back with other things, other than give some money to some of the people to keep doing some of the things they're already doing, which is never, never particularly struck me as a good long-term solution.
Deputy Mayor.
So, and, and I am not, I'm not, I understand that, that, that February 10th is a, is a date, it just struck me as, as a better date than the 18th, because the 18th agenda, from what I've been able to see, that looks pretty, pretty robust to me. And if the county is going to push us with having to make a decision, because it begins to look like they're seriously thinking about doing it, then doing, having a discussion in February, whether it's the 10th and the 18th, or the 24th, is, it's more important to have the discussion than, than the date. But, but it seems like February is the month to have it. And we're, I, I did ask the city manager, because it is an item that, that, when, earlier today, we approved on the Promise Board work plan, for them to look at collaboratively, looking at youth, mental health, suicide issues, that I know that the new superintendent has that as a, on his list of things to do that. And I asked the city manager to put that on our list of things we'd like to talk about when we meet with the school board. And I think maybe not having too long between discussions and to get some, you know, synapses going up in my head, that, that I just like to have a discussion. You know, we've had, this is kind of a visioning thing, and I remember when we went through the visioning process four and a half years ago, it took us a year and a half. So it, 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 it isn't necessarily have one discussion, and then we'll be ready to make a decision, but we ought to have a discussion, or we'll never get to a point of making a decision.
So I, I don't know, if the tail's wagging the dog in county versus city, I, I don't know how, the impact of that. I'm with the other council members. I don't know what the gravement of that decision point is, but it sounds like the 24th of February might be a good opportunity for this concept. But I'm telling you, just from what all we've heard over the years, that would be the issue on one study session agenda, would take the whole day, if you had the right speakers come in and present, I think. I mean, what's your thought? You were gonna say something?
So 1406, going back to last week's study session, what I heard was that you wanted an ordinance for review, and then to take action relatively quickly-
Yeah, yeah.
Like March 2nd, by March 2nd.
Right.
And in that ordinance would be general, general ideas of how you would like to spend the 1406 monies, which is about $97,000 a year.
Right.
Kind of relatively small amount.
That was for housing, right?
And that's for housing, that's correct. And on an annual basis, you would then decide where to go with that. Because in the short term, you might want to just, you know, work with local community agencies. But two, three years down the road, one of the ideas I heard was there could be an opportunity to partner with another, either, you can only partner with the county or a housing authority to perhaps build some housing, like a VA housing or something-
Yeah.
-like that. Though I will tell you, I'm questioning that, because the issue of homelessness with vets is really, really low, and I think there's a higher demand in other areas, but that's my two cents. The, so that's what I heard. I also heard that you wanted information regarding what it would take to quote-unquote "double down" on the 1406 monies-
Okay.
...of which you have to make a decision on that, or you have to have in place by July 27th. So it's kind of a separate track.
Right. Right.
Than the 1406 ordinance. And so, all I'm doing is providing you information if you want to go, because I didn't want to wait. And so, when I learned last week that it needed to be Feb, uh, needed to be April, whatever that, uh, April 28th, I just wanted to make you aware that in order to meet that July 27th deadline, you needed to ha, bring to the vote of the people by April 28th, one of those three options, one of the three of the four that require voter approval. And I agree with you. I, I didn't hear a consensus that the council wanted to do it, but I heard, I heard comments regarding it, and I heard questions that you wanted more information. So, I'm bringing that information back to you this evening on that. Likewise, the one-tenth of one percent, if that's a discussion that this body wants to have, I would ask for some time on that. And it doesn't need to be a lot of time. I don't think I could be right, ready by February 10th. If you just wanted to jump in on February 10th and amongst yourselves have a conversation about how to use that money, that's fine. But what I would strongly recommend is, you know, let my team go back and reach out to other agencies that have put this one-tenth of one percent in place to bring forward some examples of what have worked well. Now, with the exception of Tacoma, that's all counties. That's King County, Snohomish County, a, a good number of counties in Washington State. We don't need to go to all of them, but to bring back some ideas and options for at least a starting point for all of you folks. And then, as Council Member Bokey pointed out, you know, the county, the last time they considered the county-wide one-tenth of one percent, they had some general ideas. They didn't have a plan in place. And I, I think it's always important, if you're going to do something like that, to at least have an idea of how you're going to spend the money. But we could certainly go do that and do that research for you and bring, and bring that back to you. We could also reach out to the city of Tacoma. I don't, I do know that they are using some of their monies to fund their equivalent of their behavioral health contact team that we have here at the city. So, you know, and, and I think we could be ready on something like that by February 24th. I don't know if February 10th would work. Now, if, now going back to 1406, if you wanted to have that as a study session item on February 10th, if that's what this body wants, we can do that. Again, we're just trying to manage, you know, the work plan and your goals and objectives as effectively as we, we can, because there's only four meeting dates, you know, we, a, a month rather, and you got a lot on your plate. So, that's what I get. So.
Go ahead.
So, my recommendation is this. February 18th, bring back the draft ordinance that you requested. If the, if you want more time on that, we can bring it back on the 10th. That's your call. You just need to tell me. And then, on the second-tier item, you know, the one-tenth of one percent, we can bring back information on that as part of your February 24th study session, if that's what this body wants.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So, the 1406 one, we don't have, actually have to vote on it. We just have to let the state know by someday in July.
Yes.
Like, middle of July or some, they have some statutory date.
27th.
27th. So, we're okay on that right now. We're, so that's, there's no, really no rush, because I think we've given you the direction, kind of where we're thinking about going. Okay. I just wanted to, yeah, okay. Yeah, for me, the, the 1406 ordinance in the draft of doing it is, is, we know we have to do it by, you know, by June, July to get it, to get it done. It's, it is a separate issue for me from, do we want to consider whether to do the one-tenth of one percent for mental health? I think, I think those are, those are those issues, those issues are separated. If it so happens that we do it, it does, it, it, you know, it, it probably changes a sentence in the, in the, in the, in, in the ordinance, and it's, and the, the extra $90,000 a year that should we happen to do it in time to do that, is, is much less significant than 900,000 that a, that a mental health tax would, or if we don't do it, wouldn't, wouldn't provide us. So, I, I see the, the two of them are separate issues. I'm not trying to link them together.
The, the only way they're linked is that if you have it in place, then you can collect twice the amount under 1406 than we're currently eligible for.
Very good. Did you get enough from us as to timing? 24th is fine, it sounds like, on the one-tenth of one percent.
Okay, we can do that. Yes.
And then we'll probably know more from the county, because it's going to go through committee by then. Yeah, that'll help inform us a bit more, too. Right. Very good. Anything else, Mr. Coughfield?
I think, I think I called you all last week. Some good news, that the Puget Sound Regional Council's looking, expanding their board from 36 members to 30, 33 members to 36 members. And the City of Lakewood, City of Port Orchard, and City of Redmond are three cities that will get a seat at the table. They expect to take action at their next board meeting, which is actually this Thursday. If they do approve it, this body, I'll be bringing forward to you, how do you, who do you want to appoint to the executive board as well as an alternate? And has to be, both have to be an elected official. So...
Their primary and an alternate from Lakewood.
That's correct. That's correct. And that'll be for the next three years. They review their bylaws every three years, so it could change in three years and that we're not on the executive board. So, but just wanted to give you, give you a heads-up on that.
How many seats does that give us in Pierce County on the executive board?
Uh, we would go from four to five. So, right now, the current four seats are Tacoma has a seat, Port of Tacoma has a seat, County has a seat, and then there's an at-large seat selected from all the other cities and towns.
Okay.
And so then, the fifth one would be a standalone seat from Lakewood.
Good.
Oh, and then it's a weighted average, so it's not one vote. We're not one vote. It's a weighted average, because King County and Seattle, with all the population, they get a higher, higher weight of, of, of votes. And then, I just wanted to commend the, our day shift patrol officers today, Officers Arbiol, Beard, Pettit, and Tenny. So, there's been an individual who has been apparently trying to steal every truck battery in town for the last couple of weeks. And they kind of knew, thought they knew who it was, but, you know, it's not what you know, it's what you can prove. And so, they did some surveillance and then looked at video. And, long story short, were able to apprehend the individual today, and he is going to be charged with a major, given the number and types, major felony charges there. So, just good work by our, our, our day shift in, in being able to do that. And just wanted to recognize them on that.
Were you able to recover the number of truck batteries?
I, actually, actually, I think they, they did, in one of his vehicles. I don't know how many, but yeah, he was caught with some stuff. Yes.
He's getting charged for taking a charge.
Councilmember Branstadter mentioned the joint meeting with this body and the school board coming up. And I've got two recommended agenda items from Councilmember Branstadter. One is to talk about, one of our goals and objectives is educated workforce. You know, we work very closely and very well with Pierce College and Clover Park Technical College, for example, higher ed. The school district has been kind of hit or miss. And then youth suicide, as the council member just mentioned. I've got four suggestions that I'd like to throw out there. One is just a review of the city and Clover Park School District partnerships that we have. We do that every couple of years. The other is to continue, you know, the follow-up from last year's meeting regarding the joint use agreement for facilities and fields. I'd also like to suggest, if it's ready, knock on wood it should be, would be to share with them our 90-second video of building our Better Here, part of our imaging campaign, and, you know, taking just a couple of minutes to show that. And then I thought it would be worthwhile as a follow-up to some feedback from Councilmember Bokey last week, to give them a brief update on our 2020 transportation and park CIP projects. And we did that last year. I don't think it has to be as detailed as last year, but maybe just, you know, a, a two- to three-minute briefing on here are the projects, here's what's going to happen. And then also, perhaps a little bit longer on, you know, maybe five-minute update on economic development, just what's going on in the city. And Becky Newton actually has a pretty good presentation that we could utilize there. So, that's what I got so far on the city's end. If there are any other ideas, let me know. I'm going to be meeting with the school superintendent on Friday to hear what they have. And then, what I'd like to do is bring back to you, hopefully next Monday, as part of reports by the city manager, a draft agenda on what this body would like to see in, and maybe what you like, would like not to see on. So, that's...
If I could make a comment on the one on youth suicide, I think it's an important topic. I wonder, given superintendent Banner's focus on mental health activities in the district, if we could broaden the scope of that from just, not just youth suicide, but maybe how the school district and the city can better partner to enhance the mental health services and well-being of students in Clover Park School District and City of Lakewood, something like that. I'd broaden it a little bit.
I, I would agree with that, because the, the, I've had discussions with the youth council before, and one of their concerns, and this goes to the previous discussion about the, the, the mental health tax, that they're, they're really, you know, the school district will probably tell us how, how many people they have, and they'll mention Greater Lakes or somebody like that, they have counselors, but they're not there every day at the high schools. It's like they're, the devil's in the details, right? It's one thing to say, yeah, we've got mental health counselors. The actual, it's, well, how much are they actually there in, in each school per student? So, it was my understanding, for instance, from what the youth council is telling me, that there's, they're, they're there maybe two or three days a week. So, what I don't know is that enough? You know, what now? What's best practice? Those kind of things. So...
He would tell you, and you'll listen to him, he will tell you that there's a growing wave of need that's coming across the country. And part of the need for the replacement levy is to sustain the funding, in part for folks that provide that servicing part. That's what I heard him say at the CEEL team meeting. Yeah. I may be missing part, or did you have something to add on that? You heard more about that as well?
No.
Big issue.
Mr. Deputy Mayor.
Any else on that? Ms. Moss?
We had talked about bullying. Is that going to be included? Would that come under, like, the suicide? Would that be included in that, or is that a different topic?
I'm not an expert, but I think it comes under the umbrella of mental health services, because students who are the recipients of it certainly have a challenge.
And then, just a last item, next week, Association of Washington Cities is having their annual city action days down in Olympia. It's on Tuesday and Wednesday. The, it's a little different this year, and the official general session kicks off mid-afternoon about 2:00, 2:30 on the 28th. There are some morning programs, but that's a separate registration process. So, if you want to attend that, let myself or the city clerk know, and we can get you, get you registered. So, that's my report, Deputy Mayor.
Great. Thank you. If there are no other questions for Mr. Coughfield, let's go to council comments, because we do have an executive session. So, beware, we're going to need 15 to 20 minutes. So, Ms. Moss?
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. Last Wednesday, I did attend the economic forecast, and it was not all gloom and gloom. So, we're going to have a prosperous year. And on Friday, I was a keynote speaker for the Black Student Union at Harrison Prep. That went really well. It was really interesting how the three speakers came at this subject differently, but it all came together in the end. So, we were all commenting how well, even though different stories were told, together it came to one main point. So, that was really good. And the students did an outstanding job pulling it together. The, they got the students in, and there was like four, 500, maybe five or 600 students. And once the emcee, which was one of our council, uh, met, uh, student council, was, once she said, "Please silence your voices," you could have heard a pin drop within a second. It was amazing. A lot of the neighbors were there, and that was the comment, that they'd never seen anything so well organized. So, it was an information that I wanted to share back with the board, with the school board. And then, tonight, I attended the Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion at Clover Park High School, where Grant Twiman is the director there. And they had brought in the community, and they had an interpreter for Spanish-speaking people. And that was really good. In fact, Mrs. Bokey was part of that. But it was really nice. It was, it was something that was a way to bring the parents back into the classroom. So, that's it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bokey.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. A couple of things, or mainly, PCRC meeting on the 16th, Thursday, the 16th. They talked about the, and it was mentioned a little bit earlier by the deputy mayor, the next round of transportation funding. There's a total of $21.3 million available, almost four and a half in preservation set aside, another $3.4 million in non-motorized set aside. There's a rural set aside for 560. Of course, we don't, we don't qualify for that. And then there's a small cities one that we don't qualify for. I think it's 10,000 people, or they're going to move it now to try to keep somebody in. What was, maybe you remember that. But there's like 10 cities in that. That's $1,289. And then the transit cap is $2,320. So, then the other, the roadway and other available funding would be $10.5 million. So, we can fit in the roadway and other funding, the preservation set aside, and the non-motorized set aside, and we can do up to six projects. They also gave us the, the forms. I, I don't know if it's worth it to do six projects, because the, just the intense amount of information provided and needed for each project. So, that, you know, and that's going to happen fairly quickly. Applications are due, you know, later than Thursday, Thursday, April 30th. It's a project screening forms are due, you know, later than Friday, April 3rd, which I don't quite understand the timing on that. Very competitive process, so hopefully, we can get something out of it. They mentioned that, on the growth management side, PSRC side, that the military facilities will be considered a local center, not a regional center. I don't know if that fits into what we were hoping for, or not. Josh Penner from Warding will now become the representative on the Growth Management Policy Board. And the General Assembly is on Thursday, February 20th, at the Pierce County Skills Center, out there and off on Canyon Road, I think. So, I don't know how, if a group of us want to go, because I'll be going, and I'm sure, you know, five or six of us will want to go. So, do you want to contact Tiffany Ailment or whatever? I can send you her information.
Usually send an invite to us.
And they haven't done it?
I haven't seen it.
Oh, okay. Well, they have a new person. Yeah, it is always a Thursday, so...
Thanks. That's it?
Yeah, Boys and Girls Club is that same evening, February 27th. I know I'll be going to that, yeah.
Ms. Farmer?
Oh, there we go. All of that to say, I don't have much to report, because I haven't started going to eight billion things yet. But I did fill up my calendar, and so I will have lots to report on in a couple of weeks. I am anxious for the joint meeting with the school board to see, it sounds like we will have a lot of things to present to one another, but I'm curious to see if we will then be able to come up with joint goals or joint ways of working together to achieve some things that we both, or both the bodies would like to see, versus having a presentation session. So, I, and I'm, again, I'm new, but I'd be interested in, in figuring that out. I've been trying to figure out what topics that we could talk about, but in the context of what our goal... of what our goals, what our goals are and what their goals are and where we want to end up. So, I've been wrestling with that.
Tomorrow, the South Sound nine-one-one board is going to meet and this will be their, actually their first meeting where they're not a joint board with, because the ILA has been voted away to do that. And the, the two most significant things that the meeting is going to have is that we'll get an update on where the search for a new executive director is. And there's a consultant who's gathering applications and doing that, but look for to see where, where that is. And the second is a discussion regarding whether to add a third seat on the board for Pierce County. You know, in the, in the negotiations, to move to a public development authority, that was a significant point that was negotiated and it came down to two for Tacoma, two for the county, and a distribution of the other pieces along with the fire districts. And now, at the very onset, the, at the behest of the sheriff particularly, looking to get a, a third county seat for the sheriff. And it's on the agenda as a discussion item, not an action item. So, but it's one of those that, that's there. And I think that, my sense is, is that generally, the, the parties that were a part of the original ILA, who were a part of the negotiation for what the charter would say about the board, wanted to balance and not overweight the county presence on the board. So, anyway, but that's what's on that agenda. Ms. Grimley forwarded the TNT article that they wrote about our ordinance on shopping carts. And the article was fine, but the citizen comments, that the citizens all commented about the article. Some of them had some of our early discussions about, well, why can't we do something with the people that have the shopping carts? And so, the citizens were saying, well, you know, you're punishing the wrong people and the police aren't doing their job. And there isn't any real awareness of the fact that stores don't want to make the complaint that a, that a specific shopping cart has been stolen and have to go through all the processes to be able to go and do that. So, we may need to reinforce that as we talk to the community that, you know, you know, yeah, maybe it seems like we're punishing the stores, but the stores are saying, we'd rather be punished than have to spend the time to, to follow up and, and deal with, with prosecutions. And I don't know, maybe, maybe Ms. Grimley can put some talking points in our talking points letter for us that would sort of, so we can, all, all tell people the same thing. I, I did go down to Olympia this morning to testify in support of House Bill twenty-three oh three. House Bill twenty-three oh three is a, is a, is a bill that deals with licensure requirements for military personnel and military spouses specifically. And it was one that was important to the South Sound Military Community Partnership and to a variety of veterans organizations that I'm a part of. And it's interesting to note that this particular piece of legislation in the list of sponsors includes all four of our members of, in our delegation from the House. Both the twenty, both the twenty-ninth district and both twenty-eighth district are, are sponsors on that bill. It was, it was not, however, a hearing of where everybody came and said, oh, this is great, go, go forward and do that. There were a variety of state agencies that sent representatives to the hearing, say, don't do this. That the, the requirements to get licenses in Washington State are so much better than the rest of the world that accepting licenses from, from any other state is just not something we should do. So, but it was something that the governor thought was a good thing and I think that, so I think the bill we testified on isn't, isn't a bill that's going to survive in final form. But I, hopefully that they'll be, they'll be something because the, the, the state agency from LNI, from Health, from licensing, you know, all were sort of sounded kind of like, woe is me at the, at the hearing. That, 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 you know, you know, we know what we're doing and we like military spouses, but we, we, we've got our standards and we, we're going to uphold them. I was glad to, that on the agenda, we've approved the contract for the public art at the, at the Colonial Center. That, and while that seems like, like, like a long time, I think that we followed a really good process to, to be able to go and do that and, you know, got, got forward where we're going to get, get a piece of art, of public art that is, you know, going to have meaning. And I really like the artist that we've ended up with, who shows a good understanding about wanting her art to mean something to the community, not just to us and not just to the arts community. And I do plan to attend the city action days on the twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth with AWC down in Olympia.
I, too, was glad to see the public art contract passed. I was beginning to wonder if we were going to have a bronze snail to represent the pace by which government works with regard to public art. Yeah. It might work, might work there. Jumping on the shopping cart thing a little bit, I think it would be helpful if we can work on a communications piece that comes out from us generally or from Ms. Grimley that kind of communicates some of the facts that I think, maybe I was just reading it in a skewed way, some of the facts that we're missing, like the fact that there was some support from the actual community, the business community, that was instructive to us as we created the ordinance. It was kind of like, help us, help you, kind of a thing. And, I don't know. Mr. Caulfield, do you have some thoughts on that?
Yeah, we provided all that information to the reporter and they simply didn't print it. They didn't include it.
All the facts...
While interesting, were irrelevant to them.
Yeah, right. Doesn't mean we can't do our own piece to the Suburban Times.
Right. I'm going to follow up with our, with our team, with our team on that.
Right. Otherwise, we're a bunch of no-good people who do nothing, but...
For example, we explained that just because we see somebody with a cart pushing them down the street, we can't assume it's stolen. The business has to, for years, for decades, we have tried to get the businesses to report their cart stolen and they have, they haven't done it.
Yeah. It's not like we're going to...
So...
That are there. People take them to the rest stop.
Right.
Not to have a police arrest people who are wearing a vest up.
Right. Yeah, that would be the next article. Be the next article with your picture featured, I'm sure. With regard to activities, on Wednesday, I did attend the Horizons Forecast, the breakfast with several other folks from the city. It was a good presentation on economic activities in the last year and forecasting forward. Thursday, I attended the Pierce County Regional Council meeting with Mr. Bokey and he basically gave you the overview on that, so I won't comment further. On Friday, I had an interesting opportunity to volunteer for training for the point-in-time count. It's a count that's done, I believe, annually, funded by the federal government, kind of pushed through county volunteer agencies, in this case, run by the county or at least coordinated by the county and its staff. There are going to be three hundred and some odd volunteers going out in, well, on Thursday night from nine o'clock Thursday night until three in the morning Friday. And then additionally, some time during Friday at various sheltered locations existing within the county. So, I'm going to be on one of those teams and go out. I think it's a great opportunity to learn a lot about the face of homelessness in Pierce County in terms of the demographic background. So, we're going to know a lot whether there is a veterans indicia to homelessness, whether there's a lot more drug and alcohol-related stuff. It's a very interesting, somewhat intrusive survey that you ask folks as you kind of go through the process of meeting people on the street or in stores and inquire whether or not they know someone who's homeless or whether they are in fact homeless. And then you go through the litany of questions and, you know, they're kind of, they're intrusive. But it's hopeful to get good data to provide maybe better service and a better understanding as a matter of policy and what we do with the homeless situation here in the county. More to follow on that. On, or today, rather, I presented kind of a little state of the city and a year in review to the Cascade Group. It's a group of older folks who meet, I guess, weekly at the Tacoma Golf and Country Club, many of whom have been pillars in the community in years past and they're kind of enjoying reflection on other things in life and they, once in a while, like to hear about things going on in the city. So, we had a nice day today on that. Friday, I'm going to be attending the EDB Economic Development Board's quarterly meeting downtown Tacoma as its past chair. And then later that evening, many of us are going to the Quanis Wine Fest in McGavick Center. So, again, we support the various social service clubs and this is still come Quanis doing their thing for the community. That, I think, is all I have for now. Yes? Yeah, they're still in their crab feed, right, Mike, this week? Your, your folks, the Lions Club?
The Satter.
Got it. So, lots of good ways to raise money. Okay, so now, we're going to recess into executive session for about fifteen minutes pursuant to RCW forty-two thirty-one ten one B, to consider the selection of a site or the acquisition of real estate by lease or purchase when public knowledge regarding such consideration would cause a likelihood of increased price. We're not expected to take final action following the executive session. So, we're going to recess now. We'll have our session, we'll come back, and then we'll adjourn. We're in recess.